We'll move immediately into the regular meeting of the Urbana City Council when the clerk gives us the sign. Okay, I'll call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, June 10th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Coisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the meeting of May 28th, 2024. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Alice. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jaya. Any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Next item is additions to the agenda. We have none. Next item is our presentations and public input. There are no presentations scheduled for today, so we'll move on to public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone and state your name.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jenny Goodwine. I am a housing case manager at Cunningham Township, where I support homeless adults in securing permanent housing. And I'm here in strong support of alternative response models for the city of Urbana and to read a statement on behalf of Cunningham Township Supervisor Danielle Chennewith, who could not be here tonight. Danielle's statement is as follows: My name is Danielle Chennewith, and I serve as the Cunningham Township Supervisor, Executive Committee Member of the Continuum for Service Providers to the Homeless, and Chair of the Board of CU Public Health. Cunningham Township provided income, rent, utility, food, emergency housing, and other assistance to over 5,000 residents last year. I've been following this conversation about alternative responders and police expansion, as it has significant implications for the residents we serve, who are disproportionately low-income, housing insecure, Black and Brown, and face mental health and other disabilities. I have reviewed the budget proposal, past budgets, and both Barry Dunn reports. What I observe is a council who has called for a study of alternative responder models to reduce racialized harm. I see data that shows crime is at a historic low, and up to 73% of 911 calls for Urbana Police are noncriminal and nonviolent, which presents an amazing opportunity for our city. What I see rolling out is a premature proposal that does not once mention racial justice or equity, and a budget proposal for a massive expansion in police staff. It does this prior to stakeholder input or council direction on which alternative response model we as a community want. The budget proposal appears funded out of savings, with mention in the city's financial forecast report that tax and/or fee increases will be needed. If the current budget proposal goes through, the past and current councils will have approved a 73% increase in the police budget since 2019, while allowing civilian oversight of the police to remain broken. I wonder, how will you convince the people of Urbana in the next election that you represented their interests in doing this? I want to suggest another approach, one that is data-driven and strategic in meeting Urbana's needs. Number one, hold the line on the police budget. As the Barry Dunn data clearly shows, our police department is already too heavy on administration. Investigation has capacity it can take on to lessen patrol burden, and funding alternative responder models prior to the promised engagement with the community and without a model in place is an insult to our collective intelligence. Number two, if you want to move on something now, you can set aside funds for an RFP process to fund an alternative response pilot. Let the best proposal win. Number three, convene community stakeholders who are essential to alternative response and who have yet to be convened: the townships, but also organizations working in homeless services, mental health, domestic violence, rape crisis, reentry, food security, and conflict resolution. Our community is rich with providers who have not been included in the conversation to date. Number four, look not only at 911 response, but what services exist for responders, whether it be police or civilians, to connect people to. For example, the number-one public safety investment you can make right now is a 24/7 drop-in space. For instance, Rose Krantz's living room is now closed due to lack of funds. Number five, then let's build it together. We can create a responder model that sends the right expert to calls for service from the community and does so in a way that is safe for all, trauma-informed, and equitable regardless of race, gender, class, student status, et cetera. Thank you for listening. Thanks for your service.
Hi there. My name is Ron Kestner. I live at 1209 West Oregon Street on the west side of town. As you make decisions about the budget tonight, I urge you to consider three factors. One, the report from Barry Dunn has not been fully delivered. You don't have the full picture yet. Two, post-pandemic crime rates are falling, while the police budget keeps going up. Now is the time to consider alternative response models that can grow to be their own institutions. And three, Urbana's public safety is about equitable access to basic resources before it is about criminality. Until we adequately address issues like safe housing and mental health services, public safety will be defined by property ownership, not a shared sense of community. One might ask why the police budget is even an issue, given the circumstance we find ourselves in now, and the obvious answer is because the police have a chief who advocates for them. The police have a union that advocates for them, and the police have whole industries that advocate for them. The folks who have very little advocacy are those who are incarcerated and those who struggle with economic poverty. Unless you go out and ask for it, their authority is unlikely to be part of city government. And here we can observe our need for two kinds of authority symbolized by the concepts of power and reflectivity. Our sense of public safety requires both. Police officers do not claim any sense of expertise over reflectivity, whereas they claim statutory obligations and go through mandatory training to use varying degrees of force. When the police are called about a domestic disturbance, we expect them to interrupt the hostility, then collect the evidence for prosecution, which might include jailing someone. No one expects the police to walk domestic partners through their disagreements, or to counsel someone about effective ways to manage their anger. No one expects the police to console family members confronting mental health crises, or to steer someone through the process of recovery from drug or alcohol abuse. No one expects the police to facilitate conversations across differences, or to address the legacy of racial apartheid in the county, or to promote the ethics of caregiving and nonviolent communication for us all. These are the purviews of reflective authority, and that's not the specialization we invest in when we fund the police. No one expects the police to work through community disagreements about the massacre in Gaza. No one expects the police to promote a response to the ubiquity of microplastics and airborne pesticides. No one expects the police to advocate for sustainable practices related to anthropogenic climate change. These issues are all critical to the well-being of Urbana, but we don't regard use-of-force potential to be the authority we seek in relation to them. The main function of the police is to collect evidence and present as expert witnesses in the prosecution of cases. This is their main role in maintaining public safety, and because it involves use-of-force potential in the vicinity of transgressive behavior, I have no doubt it can be grim business. If you believe this is what we lack, sufficient personnel to collect evidence and appear in court, then make the argument enough to justify a massive budgetary outlay. But if you believe that equitable access to resources is the main issue, or if you believe that good communication is the main issue, or if you believe some aspect of revitalization is what we're looking for, then please vote to pause conversation on the police budget, at least until you have the full story in front of you. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me? Yeah. My name is Brian Maxwell. I'm a resident of Urbana. I've lived in the town for about four years now. I'm here to speak against the proposed increase in the police budget, and I think the whole decision on this should be deferred till we get the full completed Barry Dunn report. I mean, I'll start with the Barry Dunn report. Like a lot of people have already talked about, there were really two major objectives of this report that it so far hasn't delivered on. The portion that's evaluating alternative community response models, which seems to have been conveniently delayed until after this major budget decision is supposed to be made. It still hasn't delivered on that. And the whole addressing racial injustices and inequalities in this town. It basically has not done anything in that, in both portions that it's delivered on. So we've spent a bunch of money on a report that it hasn't delivered on two of its major things it was supposed to accomplish, and we're rushing a pretty huge budget decision based on an incomplete report. Some of the conclusions of the report aren't even really consistent with proposed budget, and some of the findings, like people have said, two-thirds of calls are for noncriminal activity. In quoting the report, "The largest driver of activity for UPD is related to noncriminal activity," which is why community members, as well as many police leaders, are seeking alternative responses to community service needs that utilize resources often less expensive. So we have a solution that's potentially less expensive. It's supported by the police and the community, but we're not even spending adequate time to look into it and really evaluate, or at least even wait for the portion of the report that we paid for to discuss these alternatives. The report also recommends that the police department engage with stakeholders and the community develop this alternative, and we've had some community members in here say the same. I can't tell that this has been done, because a lot of the people who it seems like that would be consulted with are in here speaking out against this proposed budget. So it doesn't really seem that there's been a lot of engagement with these communities. To talk about some of the funding, on like actually funding social services, a couple meetings ago, ARPA funding was brought up, as if this is like an investment by the city in social services. ARPA funding was not an investment by the city. That was an investment, a one-time check from the federal government to address community needs, social services. And it was a, you know, a one-time check three years ago, after a pandemic, basically. So like, the only time we adequately fund social services can't be after like a major public health crisis. That's not a sustainable funding model for social services and community development. And all these programs that came out of the ARPA funding, this is just a list of them: public health, food insecurity, healthy meals, housing, environmental stewards, low-barrier shelter, first followers, first-time homeowner's counseling, youth development programs, youth scholarships, family care program, a health and wellness center. These are all things that we could be funding, you know, if we actually gave adequate funding to social services in this town. Like, some other people have mentioned, crime rates are historically low. The report doesn't seem to address that, or, you know, consider what that means in terms of whether we need this large of an increase. I don't know why, when crime rates are the lowest they've been for two years in a row, why we suddenly have the biggest ever increase in police funding. That doesn't make sense to me. The budget does nothing to talk about any kind of roadmap. I don't know what the roadmap for Urbana is to get out of the fact that we have a 28% poverty rate in this town. That's like more than double the state average. And I don't know, you know, how increased police funding really addresses that personally. So honestly, I would request that the council at least defer this decision until some kind of more engagement has been done with the community on how we actually do, you know, alternative service response model. And until, honestly, you know, I don't think it's really fair that the outgoing mayor basically gets to set the budget tone for the next four years, for the next mayor who's going to have to come in and deal with that budget. We're basically spending down a lot of our financial reserves in this town to make a huge one-time increase in the police budget, and basically really preventing any future funding for these kinds of programs. If we basically have no financial wiggle room left after this increase in the budget, like, how does this stuff get funded in the future, other than a large tax increase, which obviously isn't going to be popular? We're basically saying that this is never going to happen with the current budget increase. So, thanks.
My name is Stephen McGuire. I want to voice concerns regarding last week's presentation by Chief Boone and other officers. In this presentation, Chief Boone gave a story of responding to a shooting as an anecdotal reason as to why he requires an additional 1.5 million. The Barry Dunn report shows that 72% of calls are nonviolent. If all of the 28% of violent calls were shootings that required the level of follow-up described by Chief Boone, then this would be more compelling. However, many calls may involve simply breaking up a fistfight and not require much investigation, coordination, or follow-up. What percentage of these 28% of violent police calls this is, I don't know, because the information was not provided. Moreover, Chief Boone did not describe what contingency plans are in place for staffing concerns during serious violent incidents, or what the efficacy of their efforts at resolving such incidents are right now, and what we can expect them to be with the additional 1.5 million. However, we know that every night homeless people need beds. Every night, people going through a mental health crisis need a place of healing. Every night, shelters need more resources and programs that help those who are struggling need funding. Also, I was at the NAMI picnic earlier where Chief Boone spoke, and I applaud him for saying that he wants to make CIT training mandatory, like in Norfolk. However, while CIT training helps save lives, it is the bare minimum, and a mere Band-Aid used to patch the equivalent of a possibly fatal artillery wound that has been done to our social services. The police should not be our social workers. Chief Boone said earlier that he did not know of any alternative response models that did not intimately involve the police. Kahoots in Eugene, Oregon, I don't know what the acronym stands for right now, others in Denver and other parts of the country are examples. The models are out there. We need to adequately research these models, implement them, or at least hold off on funding decisions until that point, rather than add additional money to the police budget. Moreover, if one-half of the social service budget is requested for the police IT specialist when such an employee is normally paid half that much, then I cannot sanction this largesse. Also, since I've got additional time, I have to say that Chief, earlier, one of your officers at the presentation spoke, asking for a chance to repair that faith. I have to say that my faith in law enforcement this year, specifically after October 7th of 2023, and the incidents that follow regarding all of these police districts, Urbana being the least, but there were, took a substantial hit. You definitely had me as a supporter. I defended the police to many friends. If all police officers acted with the level of professionalism and dignity that Laney, Barbie, and others acted during CIT training, I'm sure we wouldn't be having this meeting. However, sadly, that's not the case. My name's Stephen McGuire. If you wish to find me after the meeting, I would love to have coffee sometime and discuss with you what I observed that was problematic and possible suggestions for changing that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Zelli. I've been a longtime member of the Champaign-Urbana community. We've heard quite a few reasons about why police aren't the right tool for the job, why they don't have the right experience, the right training, the right mindset, the right legal priorities, and they're too expensive. Why this is such a better solution in so many ways, to have an alternative model, to take these calls off their hands, handle them with the right people, with the right dignity, and save a little money while we're at it. We've heard absurd nonsense reasons why that won't work, like, "We don't know another program that would do that," completely unresearched opining. And then we see an absolutely disrespectful budget presentation, disrespectful to the fire, disrespectful to IT, the vehicle fund. You guys said you were data-driven. You came up with no numbers, no graphs, absolutely no data whatsoever, just a bunch of life stories and anecdotes. Everybody knows the plural of anecdote is never data. You couldn't answer Councilwoman Wilkins's questions about your overtime. You just want money. You just came in with your hands out saying, "Give us millions of dollars." You don't care about the overtime, or why your staffing wouldn't draw overtime budgets down? Like, on that alone, the entire council should be absolutely disrespected and completely reject the budget proposal. I mean, it was incompetent. A middle-schooler could have made a better presentation for you. It was disrespectful. But we know, we know that Boone loves it, right? The President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing specifically says on page 46, 4.5.3 action item, "Law enforcement agencies should establish formal, community, citizen advisory committees to assist in developing crime prevention strategies and agency policies, as well as provide input on policing issues." You've never instituted that committee. What are you waiting for? The Barry Dunn report told you guys, not him, but you guys, let's see here, "Barry Dunn encourages UPD to explore formally adopting a co-production policing model, and that the UPD work collaboratively with city leaders and the community to evolve police strategies and approaches, operations, and community involvement through this model. As a starting point, the city could establish a committee that represents the unique diversity of the community and possesses real and substantive authority to review and guide decisions about community safety, law enforcement, justice, and the role strategies and approaches of policing within the broader environment." Maybe you don't think the budget is one of those policy decisions. That's the best I can come up with. Because if it's not, if budget is something that that committee should have a voice in, it would be irresponsible of you to pass this budget without that committee or their decision. The fact that community agencies like the IMC are having to hold a town hall this Saturday to discuss this, because you are failing to start the committee from the report you paid for, is just grossly incompetent. And to parrot the words from earlier, deeply disrespectful to our intelligence. Have the day you deserve.
Hello, my name is Alexandria Stone, and I have been a Champaign-Urbana resident for about three years now. I'm here to talk about the proposed $2 million police budget increase in Urbana. While the city of Urbana likes to advertise itself as a beacon of inclusivity and progress in central Illinois, with recent Instagram posts celebrating Pride and World Environment Day, to name a couple. And while this city is filled with beautiful, diverse people who do care about positive change, inclusivity for all, and a community where mutual aid unites and assists us all, the proposed Urbana police budget increase is a slap in the face to the people of color and everyone in our town. Nearly a third of Urbana residents live in poverty, while police officers make roughly $94,000 a year. The annual income per capita in Urbana is around $28,900. The rate of crime is decreasing despite the lack of public funding. Yet, the police need more money? Imagine if that $2 million was given right to the community. How many unhoused people would be able to receive permanent shelter? Social workers in Champaign-Urbana are overburdened and underpaid. By helping people in need within our community, rather than funding their oppression directly, everyone will benefit. Your neighbors, you, your colleagues and friends, me. A community where everyone is cared for and has nothing to offer but a better existence for everyone that lives within it. Isn't that a town that you want to live in? So I ask the council to strongly consider alternatives to funding the police in order to aid the residents of the city of Urbana. Thank you.
Hi there, everybody. My name is Ben Jocelyn. I'm an Urbana resident. First, I want to apologize to you all, because I know that the intention you set out years ago was to have good data for this conversation. I thought that Jaya's comments last week were incredibly telling, that you were here asking the same questions. And you paid a lot of money to Barry Dunn, who, at the time, was bragging about how they were doing a report in Oak Park to talk about George Floyd specifically, by name was mentioned in that report. And in the report they delivered, they described people as blacks and whites. This report that they delivered on is not up-to-date in basic terms of dignity when we talk about human rights. They sold you a bill of goods, and I hope you can get your money back. Within that report, they do have some data, but their conclusions are far-fetched, and I will gladly stand toe-to-toe with anybody who's like defending that report and show you why it is flawed, and just talk to you about that. Second, I want to talk a little bit about the presentation the police gave. I've spent over 12 years on various boards in this community. I've never seen a committee or any individual come with requests so large for the budget without any numbers to back them up. Instead, there was emotional pleas, and I find that that sets up a very dangerous dichotomy. Because the plea of saying, "We've got folks who are staying on overtime," or "Folks who are dealing with shootings," "Believe you me, I am glad that I do not have to respond to shootings. I am someone who has once been called by friends to show up at domestic violence problems." When my buddy's girlfriend was being beat up by his boyfriend, and I showed up in time to see the police make a total mess of it. And I know that the police are trying to do better, and I applaud that, but I think that there's a long way to go, and I think that it is a system which will never, and there is data to show this, serve certain segments of our community. The queer folks who I've talked to about this find that oftentimes, especially with trans folks, and, you know, there's double arrests that happen all the time, and folks who are not documented have no access to these resources because they're afraid that either themselves, their children, or their partners will face deportation when resolution and conflict resolution is what our community needs. In addition, during that time, they talked about how only four officers are able to respond to shootings. If over 100 officers can show up when some kids pitch tents on the lawn of the university when they're trying to protest genocide, I think it is absolutely ridiculous that we can only have four cops showing up to shootings. That is not a matter of resource, that is a matter of priority. So, when we talk about community resource and mental health, those are things that we're asked to see as community-wide resources that are seen collectively. We have to see what resources are there in Champaign and otherwise. But when we talk about police, suddenly we're isolationist. I think that is fundamentally disingenuous logic. Yeah, I also want to talk quickly about the 30-30-40 model that folks are like basing all these hires upon when asked about whether or not that model's been shown to make areas more safe. Michelle Weinzel said clearly that that has not ever been proved to be true. And then I want to talk about backfilled positions. We've got this police expansion, which is talked about, and folks are like, "And I want to remind you that these are backfilled positions, because we voted for these other hires back in December, when the police asked for a mid-year raise, when these votes were taken before you, and you all said, 'We don't support those positions at this time,' and you wanted to wait for more information." Nothing since then has changed definitively about the end of the report, and yet here we are, being asked and told that those positions are given, right? We voted already in December because of community response and said, "Those are not positions that we support at this time." So to have the folks running the budget come before you and say, "These are backfilled positions," and act like, "Of course, you've already said yes to these positions," is again disingenuous and wrong. And, sorry, I think that that comes pretty close. I also think that when we talked about shootings and how canine officers are a fundamental position of that, that worries me. I don't think that canine officers, "Oh, and cars. I new car every three years." That's also ridiculous. But fundamentally, the model we want to build is one that serves all people. I think that you've been working towards that. I think that you've been sold a bill of goods on the report you've been given. I'm happy to talk about how it's a flawed report with anybody. I'm really excited about sort of the intention that was set forth at the beginning. We have a community full of people ready to talk about this and build that model together, and I hope you don't pass a budget, which makes that kind of growth impossible. Thank you very much.
Not as tall as last person. Evening, council. Evening, residents. My name's Tony McNeely. I'm an 11-year employee here of the city of Urbana and a resident. I'm a police officer. I'm a patrol officer here. I was also, prior to this, a 38 Bravo, civil affairs specialist for the Army. What that is, is work in foreign environments with non-governmental positions.
Point of order, can you speak to the council, please?
Oh, sorry. To improve, to improve the overall lifestyle and reach standard of living for people that are in impoverished area. I 100% agree with what I've heard for the last four or five years, that we do need more social workers to work with the police department. I currently, as a patrol officer, I only have one, and I would love to have more. The problem that we have is that if someone has a master's degree in clinical social work, asking them to come work for a city at the pay that they are going to get versus the private sector, there's not a whole lot of people that are jumping at that, and it's unfortunate. I am a CIT-trained officer. I go to more mental health calls that. And it's unfortunate. I am a CIT-trained officer. I go to more mental health calls on a monthly basis than I can shake a stick at. And I would like to have more clinicians available to work with those calls. Unfortunately, like I said, only have one. And when he goes to calls and to do patient follow-up, he's required to have one of us there. Because once again, a mental health problem, you never know which way it's going to go. It's the same thing with DCFS. Unfortunately, this day and age, we also have to have officers that go with DCFS to help with families and to help with those environments, because we don't know what the situation could turn into for someone trying to improve that environment. I wholeheartedly and agree with what I've heard some people say. Unfortunately, though, I do agree with the budget because I need more help. The reason that we have a medium income, or median income right now of $94,000 annually per police officer is because I worked more 16-hour shifts in the last 12 months than I can count. I don't have enough people to help me. I would love to have more staff. I would love to have more clinicians. I would love to have more outreach for the homeless. I don't have anywhere to put them. But unfortunately, that's a county-wide problem. That's a nationwide problem that we have to, like, if someone knows the answer, I would absolutely love to hear it, because that would be an amazing solution for everyone. I'm just asking for more help at my job so that I can accommodate it. And I know that a couple people have said a statistic, I haven't seen it myself, that we're at a historic low for crime. And that's amazing. I just haven't seen it. However, I can tell you from sitting in my position, in my shoes, I'm still averaging 20 to 30 calls for service in a 12-hour shift as myself. That's not the whole city. That's just me as one officer working in a beat. As far as community engagement, and officers not capable and/or participating in that, I, there are initiatives. I, police FOIA, my training record, I've done more community policing courses than I can count. I have developed programs and work with communities. I've emailed one or two city council members here about events that we're having or problems that we're having in the low-income communities, and asking if they've got insights or inputs that could help with that. I would like to, if, if time's available, I will attend the event on Saturday, Independent Media Center, and help throw some stuff on a dry erase board and try to come up with a solution. But honestly, if you've got someone that's out there 24/7, always available, and can help and assist with these types of programs and/or domestic mental health issues, that's going to be a police officer, it's going to be a firefighter, it's not going to be an office that works nine to five, Monday through Friday. Kahoots Program, I researched that quite a bit. It's an amazing program. However, I challenge people to look at their actual statistics that they publish. They have X percent of calls for service they still have to have law enforcement go to with them because of the volatility of the situation. So, once again, that brings it back to, we're still going to need police officers to help these trained professionals fix a problem. It's not just going to go away by having someone else go out there and fix it on their own. There's a potential for that person to get hurt. There's a potential for the person that's in crisis to get hurt. And law enforcement needs to be there to help protect everyone. Like I said, I, I'm always available for ride-alongs. Name is Anthony McNeely. My badge number is 371. I welcome anyone. Please email me. Please come do a ride-along, and I'll show you what I'm talking about. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Hall. I'm trying not to shake because I have panic attacks really badly. I'm a resident of Urbana. I have been for the past four years. Hi. I have also been a social worker for the past 10 years, and the pay is very low, and that is why a lot of social workers go into more privatized fields. So, giving them more money potentially instead of the police could do a lot because they're better trained, they're better suited, they understand. A lot of times, I went to a lot of households with just my paper and pen, and I didn't need an officer, although things do come up. I understand that, but for majority of instances, it's never de-escalated the situation. No offense, I just wanted to read where policing origins. "The origins of modern-day policing, tough on crime, laws have put an unprecedented number of nonviolent offenders behind bars, and our neighborhoods feel no more secure. This system has deep roots in slavery, so a lot of it was to," as KRS-One used to say, "the officer was the overseer." And so basically, it's to protect the people with money and the people with land and property. It's not to help those who really need it. And I'm also going to claim my ignorance. I have not read the report, and I don't want to speak for other people, but a lot of people who should be here who really need to advocate their needs are not here because they're working as well. 16-hour jobs, and they're trying to pay rent, and they're trying to put food on the table, and they're trying to do a lot more too. I'm sorry, I'm shaking so bad. I understand the idea of police, but it's just not there. The, the fracture of what police have been to so many communities, especially black communities, it's just not there. There's no trust. You can't build on a broken system. And I really encourage the funding to go more towards mental health, all of the organizations my friend listed. And, yeah, I just want to read one more quote. Sorry. "The crisis in policing is the culmination of thousands of other failures, failures of education, social services, public health, gun regulation, criminal justice, and economic development. And all cruelty begins with dehumanization, not seeing the face of the other, not seeing the whole humanity as the other. A cultural regiment of dehumanization has been constructed in many police departments. In that fertile ground, racial biases can spread and become entrenched. And this is especially true for those individuals who are lower income, black, people of color, LGBTQ, et cetera, et cetera." So, yes, we need more social workers, mental health workers. We need more facilities so that people can get the things that they need. Because otherwise, sometimes people engage in nonviolent crimes to get the things they need because they're humans too. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Sodropoulos, and I work with students who live in Urbana, and I also do a lot of shopping and just living in Urbana. My comment covers a few different things. It's evolved as folks have been speaking this evening, so I'm trying to keep it smooth and connected. I wanted to respond to what Officer Anthony McNeely was saying earlier. Individual officers are typically not the issue. What most of us are speaking to is systemic. We have systemic problems with poverty, racism, lack of healthcare, and, yes, systemic violence within the policing force. The lack of social workers is in part connected to a lack of education. So, it's not just cities that don't have enough social workers, it's also public school districts that don't have enough social workers. There's just not enough people who are trained in social work. And so, how we can address multiple issues here is by investing our money into public education and making sure that people are housed, people have mental health care, so that they have the opportunity to get that education and training in social work. That way, there will be a greater pool of social workers that we can hire from. And also, yes, if we are paying our social workers as much as we are paying our police officers, that would solve the issue, just like we're saying that paying police officers more would help us hire more police officers, which are understaffed, according to the city. I also heard, I would love to know the solution to these problems. I'm asking for more help at my job. Again, these things can be addressed by pouring more money into our neighbors, making sure that our neighbors have all of their basic human needs met. And also, what is the data point that crime has gone down? It's an FBI data point, so maybe check in with the FBI. So, moving on to other things I wanted to say, four years ago today, this council was dealing with a case of police brutality against Aleah Lewis. Many of us, myself included, rallied outside of the city building here with the following demands: to tell the city council to drop the charges against Aleah Lewis, to vote down Chief Sarah Finn until the investigation is complete, to hold the responsible officers accountable, and to reform the civilian police review board. As part of that particular movement, which the Barry Dunn report called the "defund the police" movement, Urbana routed several hundred thousand dollars away from paying a police officer in order to pay for this very Barry Dunn report. The very report that says that even though crime in Urbana is at a low, Urbana should still spend more money to hire officers, even before looking at what an alternative response model would look like, just doesn't make sense. It feels like déjà vu, like we haven't learned anything. And folks who are far more knowledgeable than I am, like Township Supervisor Danielle Chinowith, are asking you to please fund or at least explore the social services that would get at the root of remaining violent crime. We can fight poverty with this money. We can ensure everyone has affordable housing, food security, physical and mental health care. I wanted to say that some of you ran for this office following incidents of police brutality in Urbana. We know that if funding the police worked, it would have worked by now. I'm asking you all to support what Urbana residents are saying, to invest in community and not more police. Thank you.
My name is Gwyneth Crebsio. I'm a resident of Urbana, a resident of Ward 5. I'm really enjoying becoming familiar with this space and with this room. I often find myself sitting at home watching the livestream and then having my heart racing and my blood pumping and realizing I have something to say. I want to encourage people to keep saying things and thank all the people that are here that are speaking. I am curious, with, with you all sitting back here, being very, listening but being also very stoked, it's a very strange, sterile environment to speak to your representatives. And I'm curious if you actually feel like members of the community that you say that you serve. And the way that we speak about this, with all of our statistics and all of our putting people in these boxes, like, who are, who are you afraid of? Who are you trying to protect yourself from? Because the people that I'm in community with, that have mental health crises, that are in situations of domestic abuse, and situations of homelessness, and all of these categories that we're putting in, those are people. Those are my friends and family. And they're not actually people that you need to create a militarized force to protect yourself and your community from. They're just a part of our community. And so, I hope that you'll consider, when you're looking at these statistics, when you're looking at these reports, that these are, these are our people. And not only that, but that there are often, like someone else was saying before, we're treating the people in our community. We're, at the end of our workdays, talking our friends off the ledge and working ourselves overtime. And I also want to ask you, if our, if, if you went to a city and you called 911 and there was no police that responded to you, that would be considered a city that's really broken, right? That would be a city in crisis. So, why is it that if you've ever gone and tried to receive services from social workers and from other resources in town, if you go look at the reviews for the Department of Public Health and of Human Services, why there's so many people that don't receive the care that they need? Why there's so many people that have had to end up on the street because of various budgetary issues and lack of shelters, and why so many basic community services are in crises? And if this was happening with our police force, it would be, like, people would be so upset and would be so judgmental of the way that we run our town. And yet, we run our social workers into the ground, we pay them nothing, and they're expected to do this work off of nothing? So, I hope that you'll consider that, yes, I'm sure we have a lot of overworked individual police officers, and also, we have other services that are so worked to the bone that we have somehow become just apathetic to the fact that they aren't functioning, and people in our community is having to take care of itself, which we do. I do gladly. I'm so happy to help and support my community when I can. But we're also just people. And there are services, and there's funding available, and there's things that you can do to redirect and actually take care of our community members that aren't, that aren't something to be feared, because they're just, they're just our community members. So, I want to, and I also want to say, if you're sitting on the other side of that desk, feeling maybe tired of hearing the same thing over and over again, tired of going in circles, tired of making your best effort and then getting yelled at for it, maybe consider that that's not how it has to be. Maybe consider that these alternative models can work. Maybe consider that there can be public servants, like Danielle Chinowith, that is greatly loved in this community, and I, and, and see that there are, there are models, and there are folks to aspire to when it comes to governance, that doesn't have to be like this. You don't have to be sitting back there and feeling at odds with your community. It's actually not that hard to be in camaraderie with us. And I would love for that to be the dynamic, because I feel like there's been a lot of us just yelling at you or pleading for you to do some bare minimums. So, thank you for your time, and I hope that you can actually listen and hear and not just check out in the way that I imagine you often are. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm James Kilgore, from resident of Urbana and from First Followers. One of the things that constantly strikes me about this whole process is how backward this is moving, how backward the whole process is. That you start by hiring a researcher, and then they go and begin to do the research, and then a quarter of the way through that research, we start voting on what, on the outcomes or whatever it is they're supposed to be recommending, before we even get the data. As I constantly remind you, we have a world-class university right here. No university researcher is going to do that research process and say halfway through, "I give up. Just fund, just fund whatever you want to fund, because what I'm doing doesn't make any difference." But that's the process that we're doing with the Barry, the Barry Dunn report. It's, we're trying to make it irrelevant. And in fact, the city was trying to push this through long ago, and managed to slide by $20 million for fire stations without people really studying that. But somehow, we have to spend a lot of time focusing on the police and ignoring the other major problems that we have in this community. So, we've listened to people come with a whole range of proposals for what we could be doing besides hiring more police. Minnie Pearson, last week from the N double E CP, came and suggested that we provide some kind of a task force where the community could interrogate the chief and have a dialogue with the chief. Danielle Chinowith suggested that we have an RFP to have a 24-hour drop-in center. Now, we at First Followers, we run a drop-in center for eight hours a week, and it's exhausting because that eight hours does not really include the, the hours of work. As the police officer has said, our workday doesn't end. We get phone calls at 10 o'clock at night. We get text messages at 6 o'clock in the morning. We have a whole range of things that we do that extend way beyond the hours of our work. So, to have a 24-hour drop-in center where people who are unhoused, where people who are impoverished can go, where people who are just freezing outside or sweltering outside can go and have a safe space, would be an amazing kind of addition to this community. There's, there's a number of task forces that have been done in the community, in this county in the past, which perhaps should be what the city is considering. We've had a community justice task force. We've had a racial justice task force. Why not initiate some kind of a task force to study not policing, not crime, but poverty and inequality? That's, that's what, that's where, that's where the problem lies. That's where the underlying cause of crime is inequity and poverty. And as we keep saying, Urbana has a very high rate of poverty, but that does not get attention. Instead, it's always about crime and policing, even though crime rates are going down, and even when they go down, perhaps it's not accepted. even when they go down, perhaps it's not accepted by the authorities that that's what's really happening. So lastly, of course, we need to study this coordinated effort between police and community to deal with these issues. And in particular, to look at responders that are going to not be uniformed police officers, but are going to be social workers and other qualified individuals who have been impacted by the criminal legal system and who understand how to deal with the people that are being subjected to abuse by the police and by the criminal legal system. So, let's not add more police, let's look at all the other options thoroughly, rigorously, because we don't need more police.
My name's Demond Dade. I'm the Fire Chief for Urbana Fire Department, also an Urbana resident. And I'd like to say a few things. As Fire Chief for Urbana Fire Department, I assure you that I'm dedicated to the safety and well-being of our community. And I want everyone to understand that the police department, that police force plays a crucial role enabling us to effectively respond to emergency situations. While the public support may fluctuate on this issue, it's important to recognize that the police are essential partners for us in efforts to safeguard lives and property. There are instances where we as firefighters require the police assistance to be able to even have access to a scene. The collaboration between both of our departments, the coordinated cooperation between our departments, gives us the ability to have swift response to emergencies and ultimately benefiting the community we serve. I believe that investing in the police force is not only necessary, but a strategic decision to enhance the safety and emergency preparedness for our community. By adequately funding the police department, we can strengthen the synergy between our agencies and better protect our residents. And I want everyone to understand that sometimes your position will help you understand perspective. And we're not here saying that we don't want all these other things to be explored, but we shouldn't get rid of something that we know is still a necessity. If we are able to bring in all the social workers and do all those things and we create a utopia here, you also have to understand that's going to bring in more people and there still will be a criminal element. So, you know, and to just say, you know, it has its roots in slavery, it may be true. But also, some of our medical practices have their roots in the Holocaust. We don't just get rid of those things, because they may have started ill-willed. The police force here does a tremendous job and significantly allows us to do our job. And I can guarantee you that without adequate policing, you will see an increase in the amount of time it takes us to respond to some calls. I regularly come into work to say, "Chief, we had to hold up, we couldn't even go in," or "we got in," and then sometimes, you know, the offenders are even to the point threatening firefighters. And without the police, we can't do our jobs effectively either. So, I would like our community to understand, and I believe they do, that we are here trying to solve this together, and the police are part of that as partners. So, that's all I want to say.
I'm Brad Allen, here to voice my opposition to an increase in the police budget and expansion in the police force. I know that the entirety of the Barry Dunn study is not yet fully completed, but it's been clear about the lack of transparency from the Urbana Police Department. Crime in Urbana is on a decline. The FBI admitted that the Urbana crime rate is at a 10-year low, and crime has decreased by 5% since last year. Seventy-two percent of all calls are nonviolent. These are the facts. At the last meeting, the police offered nothing but anecdotes when trying to argue in favor of a massive increase in funding. Since we care so much about anecdotes to support our positions, let me hit you with an anecdote. There was a homeless veteran that attended last week's Champaign City Council meeting. He was asking for help. The millions of dollars that are being requested for the police budget could very easily go to the programs to help him. Last week in the Urbana meeting, an officer said that he wants to heal the relationship between the police department and the public. That starts with the cops themselves. That should not and does not require millions of dollars and more cops on the streets. If they really want to heal the relationship with the public, don't give people protesters' concussions while processing genocide. During that first Friday of the encampment, there were dozens of officers from numerous departments in the area that were able and willing to show up at the drop of a hat when they heard they might have a chance to be called upon to brutalize us. So no, I don't buy the notion that more cops or police funding are necessary in Urbana. Put that funding towards programs that actually reduce crime and actually improve the lives of the people.
My name is Marina Manetti, and I've lived in Urbana since 1977. I've been a student of the University of Illinois. I've gotten undergraduate degrees, graduate degrees, I've gone elsewhere, gotten other graduate degrees, and I've studied history, human history, contemporary, in every which way, literature, from every angle. This is the most incarcerated population on the planet. And it's the most armed population on the planet. And you all are asking for more militarization? What's going on here? What's going on here? Who are you, anyway? Our voice is loud and clear here. What are you trying to turn this thing into? It's top-heavy already. We need attention to the people who are in need. What the hell is going on here? Have any elected officials any shame? You want more trauma? I'm saying, let our people go and give them what they need. They're treated worse than animals in zoos. They don't have access to education in there that's sufficient. They don't have any instruments of music to perform. They are treated like less than animals. And the guards are bored with their routines and sometimes play games on them. That's abuse of power. And we've heard time and again, how when people have power, they abuse it. And I'm asking you, what are you doing with your power? We asked for less police and more attention to the needs of the public, and you're giving us millions more money for the police, which run around with guns in their holsters. We need better education, better attention to emotions, de-escalation from every side, and you give us exactly the opposite. What's going on here? Who are you listening to? It looks to me like this report was figured out right bef— I just found out that most administrations, when they put out a job opening, have already an eye for who will fill it. They tailor their descriptions of the job to the person they're going to hire. It looks like that's happened here already, with this research that's not even being bothered to listen to, because you already know what was going to be in it and that it fit your plan. Let's get some real help for real needs here. It looks like some people are being serviced and other people don't even count as people. You can do better than this.
Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, thank you. There are quite a few emails.
I know. We've been asked to read some emails into the record, and I'll do that. The first is from Anna Victoria. "I'm writing as a constituent opposed to the proposed plan to expand the Urbana Police Department. In Urbana, crime is at an historic low while food and housing insecurity is increasing. It is thus baffling why over the years this council has increased the Urbana Police Budget while defunding community programs. Instead of hiring more officers to respond to 9/11 calls, the majority of which are nonviolent in Urbana, this council should expand trauma-informed community care resources to respond to unmet community needs. Study after study has shown that most crime is related to poverty. Given that police do not prevent poverty, but in fact cause economic hardship by disproportionately targeting black and brown bodies resulting in legal fees, job loss, and incarceration, the choice to expand UPD is completely illogical. I urge this council to reconsider funding UPD and instead expand access to food and housing." The next is from Lila Leopold. "Please include this email in this evening's public comment. I want to continue, I write to continue to add my support to the voices among you who express concern over moving ahead with the proposed police department budget before completing the Barry Dunn Report and before fully pursuing true alternative responder models with community partners. It is especially important that the design of alternative responder models be taken seriously and that they extend beyond the purview of the current police department operational model. That is to say, the only way to implement an alternative responder model in Urbana need not be to include it in the very department that is currently under review and of which the review thereof is not complete. The strength of alternative responder models lies in the very essence of their being alternative, and yet no less robust and effective in their handling of community calls. There will need to be close work between community organizations and the police department, of course, but that does not mean cherry-picking a few positions from the idea of an alternative responder model and placing these positions within the police department itself, along with a significant increase in the police budget is a guarantee of anything at all except a larger police force. I urge you to take the police of your communities seriously when they call for your urgent consideration of their safety as part of a holistic view of health and community empowerment, not of increased opportunity for incarceration, violent and potentially deadly interactions between officers and community, and increased surveillance. Now is not the time to short-circuit the research we as a community and you have, the council, have set out to do. Now is not the time to pass a budget that does not align with the goals of this pursuit. An increased police budget will not be an effective Band-Aid. It will come at a great financial and interpersonal expense that for too many in this community will only further struggle and hardship. We owe each other a better way forward together." Next communication is from Sharon Irish. "Dear hard-working council members, when I prepare a budget, which I have often done for grant proposals, I consider how much I have available to spend, and then I prioritize what most needs to be funded to meet the goals of a project. Budgets, of course, show our values, and I would prioritize housing, employment and training, healthcare, education, infrastructure maintenance, and improvement. As the 2015 President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing noted, policies must reflect community values. Urbana, I hope, defines public safety broadly as including safely housed people with opportunities for education and training, jobs and adequate healthcare with equitable infrastructure. Addressing these would be proactive. Completely aside from considering what public safety broadly construed might be, I don't see a responsible way to pay for the proposed police staffing budget. The Barry Dunn Report recommends, quote, 'a co-production policing model to evolve approaches,' end quote. This recommendation, to me, offers the opportunity for Urbana to create a broadly representative task force to collaborate with city departments. The task force would identify goals and create a timeline to meet these goals, figure out whether, quote, 'alternative responders,' end quote, should be part of the police department, and make adjustments to the plans as they is implemented, taking into account the cost of each aspect of the plan and the evidence of need for it. Creating a task force may seem like delay, but I think instead it would strengthen the relationships and partnerships that are crucial to building and maintaining a safety net. It models an ongoing conversation which is central to a healthy, evolving community. If Urbana is going to raise more taxes or go into debt, we must be cautious and strategic about committing ourselves to a large and perhaps limiting budget allocations." Next up is from Donald Owen. "I strongly urge you to reject the proposed two-and-a-half-million-dollar increase in the Urbana Police Budget for next year. It's irresponsible and unwarranted. The city should not be spending down its reserves on positions that will become an ongoing expense. According to the data compiled in the Barry Dunn Report, crime in Urbana is at an all-time low. Urbana does not need more police. As the former superintendent of Urbana School District 116, I was one of the original advocates of the Summer Youth Employment Program in Urbana. Communities across this country have demonstrated that economic development and youth programming ultimately reduces crime. Why isn't Urbana talking about investing more in community services, social services, and proactive ways of reducing crime? This year, several organizations that applied to the City of Urbana to participate in the Summer Youth Employment Program received partial funding. I'm currently the treasurer of the Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center. The IMC submitted a very strong application to fund high school interns through the Summer Youth Employment Program. The IMC was told last week it would only receive 50% of its original request. Think about how much youth programming you could fund for the cost of one police officer. Think about the lasting impact youth programming could have on our community. I want to remind you that budgets are moral documents. I want to ask you, what type of community do you want to create with your city budget? Do you want to create a city that is overpoliced, or do you want to create a city that has a plethora of programs and activities for our youth?" And the last one I have, there may be more. "My name is Sana Sabawala. I'm a Urbana resident in Ward 5, a member of the CU Muslim Action Committee. I am sorry I can't be there to make this statement in person today. I want to put it on public record that I don't support an increase to the police budget. The community has made it clear through the IMC petition, through public commentary at council, and even through conversations mentioned in the first Barry Dunn Report itself, that the community is interested in alternatives to policing. The money earmarked for new police should go instead to exploring and experimenting with alternatives. Increasing the police budget is not justifiable, especially because alternatives haven't even been explored. Increasing police officers won't help to solve any pressing city issues. Alternatives to policing might. Please do not approve increasing the police budget this cycle. There's no need to rush into hiring more officers. Explore alternatives. Spend more time finding out what the community needs, because ultimately, meeting those needs are what keep us safe."
Dear Urbana City Council, I am writing to voice my opposition to the proposed increases in the Urbana Police Budget. Increased policing funding is an irresponsible use of taxpayer funds. Urbana residents want safer ways to call for help that connect people to services. Therefore, I encourage the city to invest in community response models and support services. I will vote for officials who support community responders. Warm regards, Cassidy Short. My name is Lisa Hall, and I'm a resident of Urbana. I've lived here for the past three years and love the area. There are things that could vastly improve the area, and more police presence is not one of them. Crime in Urbana has been low for the past few years, and the majority of the calls have been for nonviolent crimes. What we do know is that many people are ALIS, asset-limited, income-restrained employees, who need assistance meeting the bills. who need assistance meeting the bills. We could spend that money elsewhere on funding subsidized housing, food banks, mental health, and job creation. We could also spend the money on schools, mental health mobiles, treatment for addictions, so many other things. What we do know is that more police makes things worse and makes people feel less safe. Please do not spend the money on cops. Thanks.
Are there any others? Grace?
Yeah, I can take a turn and then maybe Jay knows which ones we're still missing. I'll do Matt Trino we haven't done yet, right? Okay. Good evening, my name is Matt Trino. I'm an Urbana resident in Ward Five and I have lived here most of my life. I want to voice my opposition to more police being added to our force. Many people in our community have been advocating for years to reduce the scope of the police responsibilities and invest that money into other municipal systems. Instead, we have been increasing the budget in recent years. I would like to see more funding put towards alternative mental health workers and social workers and other staff to support people calling for help, mental health issues, or for addressing noise complaints. We have, we clearly have limited funds in a small town like Urbana. We could do so many things to help community members with $2.7 million that would help pull them out of poverty, houselessness, or get people services that they need. We do not need these police officers. Reduce their workload and spend that money on our community, not on police. There are so many other tools that are at your disposal that will have better outcomes for Urbana and you have the power to do this. Thanks for your time, Matt. And I could do one more from Adam. I think that leaves you a few. Please read my comments into the public record. I would like to try to make sure we are all working from the same set of facts, though. Mayor Marlin claimed that the statistics of 73%, 73% of calls are for either noncriminal issues or noise or music complaints was incorrect. It is not. I can explain where the 73% comes from. Page 80 of the Barry Dunn Report shows 5,322 calls were about crime. Of those, 543 were for music and 348 for noise complaints on page 66, which means 4,431 calls about crimes other than noise or music complaints. That makes up 27% of the 16,264 total calls back on page 80. The remaining 73% were noncriminal, non-music/noise complaints. All of these numbers come from the Barry Dunn Report, who credited Deputy Chief Searls as being one of the primary people who provided the information. Next, James had a question about public comments saying that the proposed budget increases police spending by 61%, which is a far cry from what it looks like in the budget that has been proposed. I can also help resolve this discrepancy. As was alluded to a week or two ago by city staff, it depends on whether the context of what has happened over the past few years is taken into account or not. The police budget in 2019 was $10,253,245. 16,000, oh gosh, millions, let me start back a million. 16,529,669 has been proposed for 2025. 16,529,669 minus 10 million. Can I, can I front end here? Does anyone mind for the record? Is that allowed? Is that, if I say 10 million? As a thanks, okay. And these will all be in the records for the exact numbers, but I'll just save myself struggling through all the numbers. Minus 10 million equals 6 million sum increase from 2019. 6 million divided by 10 million equals 61.2% increase from 2019. If we ignore the past five years of increases to the police budget and limit our view to just this budget cycle, it's a 20% increase. It was 17 million sum in 2024. 16 million minus 13 million, 20, or 2.7 some million increase. That increased 2.7 million divided by 31 million equals 21% increase this year. We can debate about whether the city should budget to hire a mediator to handle noise complaints. Opinions may differ on whether we should spend the maximum amount allowed by policy or leave room for any future efforts without raising taxes or cutting programs. Those are all matters of opinion and should, we should enjoy a healthy public debate. But I encourage everyone to be looking at the same set of facts and refrain from accusations that critics of your proposed budget are citing incorrect numbers when the reality is that you don't understand where those numbers are coming from. Let's try to have a constructive conversation.
Did that resident share their name? And it's okay if they wish to remain anonymous. I just didn't catch it earlier, I'm sorry.
It's not in the thing, but it's Adam.
Oh, okay.
And it, I think you're on that email. It's all city council.
I see, I think, three more. So, dear city council, please read into the record. My name is Matthew Murray. I live in Ward Five and have lived in Urbana since 1992. I strongly oppose any vote by the city council to approve hiring additional police officers. I think it is a good thing that the Urbana Police have received training in dealing with people suffering in mental health issues and are often good at de-escalation. But our police department should not be used as a substitute for providing social work interventions and mental health assistance to people in our community. Unfortunately, that is what is often happening. I would definitely support the city instead spending a large sum of funds to create and operate a non-police alternative responder team that would be sent to nonviolent, noncriminal situations that are phoned into the 911 Met-CAD dispatcher. That team would only request the involvement of law enforcement if the situation demanded it. Thank you, Matthew Murray. Next one is from Miriam Larson. Please read this into the record for city council, thank you. Staying focused on what is positive and constructive is not easy. That is why we look at data to help us assess what we have accomplished and where we need to focus problem-solving energy. Looking at the FY25 budget, it is clearly positive that this administration and council have created a significant increase in the unassigned fund balance. This was no small amount of work. Careful decisions over the past five years put us in a position in 2023 to have 27 million in reserves as of June 30, 2023. For context, this is up from 13.9 million in 2022. Pre-pandemic in 2019, reserves were 15 million. You have built the groundwork for us to be flexible, creative, and constructive in our programming. If we continue in this vein of looking at what is going well in our community, we cannot help but look at crime statistics. According to the FBI, we are at a 10-year historic low. Certainly, this isn't a reason to become complacent, but we must, but we still must ask, where are the most urgent needs at this moment? The mayor's FY25 budget links to a shocking graph that shows the housing price index change over time. These have been steadily rising and there's an alarming spike occurring right now. The mayor also stated that we are underfunding our infrastructure needs in the amount of about 20 million annually. From personal experience, I'm also hearing from local families and youth, that there are simply not enough activities for youth and that we are losing a critical after-school program in the Splash Program, which is funded by a federal, federal grant that is coming to an end. While I appreciate the increase in the social service grant budget to 300,000, this is a drop in the bucket to subsidize youth services in the area. When the IMC's grant was approved, we were awarded half of our 28,000 requests. I heard many council members comment on the strength of all the submitted proposals, of which IMC was just one. This is a clear space to build, to construct, to set up for our youth for success. These organizations, as well as those organizations funded through ARPA grants, are key collaborators for an alternative response model. And collaboration is most successful, successful when collaborations, collaborators, excuse me, are involved with the beginning of a new program. Therefore, I do not think it is appropriate to move forward on an alternative response model or police budget increase in the FY24 budget. First, you must convene and meaningfully involve community organizers and leaders. Barry Dunn is slated to do this next in Phase Three and Four of their study. We are mobilizing as a community to determine what we want to see happen. Now is not the time to lose all the flexibility you've built up. It is the time to maximize outrage, community building, and creative conversations. Thank you for your service on the council. Sincerely, Miriam Larson, UC IMC Executive Director. And then finally, we have one from Katie Muir. It says, if the, if the poverty rate in Urbana has consistently been 27% since 2020 and the crime, the rate of crime, aside from the rate of violent crime, has consistently decreased in Urbana since 2020, doesn't it stand to reason that the investment we are making in our police force is working? Katie Muir, Board Seven. Those are all the ones I have.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to reports of standing committees and there aren't. Oh, yes, sorry. Comments to make. Grace?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the, to the public for coming out tonight and any times you do choose to share your opinions with us. Sorry if it looks like I'm not paying attention to any of you. I'm a note taker, so I have notes on what each of you are saying every meeting, so I'm not always an eye contactor, but I am definitely listening just to speak for myself. I wanted to follow up with some other comments, too. I think we have Faith Who's Come and Spoke here the past few weeks, and I did want to say that I absolutely encourage you to make an official report for the incident that you've shared with us if you haven't yet. There's a way to do that even online with UVI, I imagine, maybe you have. And just wanted to clarify that unfortunately, there's not really anything that myself as a council member or the City of Urbana unfortunately can do about the University of Illinois Police Officers. There's really nothing I can do as a council member about the Urbana Police Officers and their behavior, actions, and policies either. So as fortunate as that is, it's not out of not caring. It's, I hope you can use the proper channels available and not knowing any way to contact you to follow up on that. For the event on Saturday at the IMC, I encourage people to go and share their thoughts and listen and have diverse perspectives that can be shared and I hope some good conversations. I'll unfortunately not be in town, so I'll have to watch remotely later, but I hope that goes well. And as far as the budget stuff, I'll save it for, you know, most of my comments for we have a discussion at the end of this meeting. I hope you all will watch and stay tuned. If you go home and watch, totally understandable, I would if I could. But my overall comments is that I think this budget's not sustainable or responsible, and I think we need a comprehensive process for community changes or increases in money. And we'll have more at the budget tonight and the next few weeks. Thank you.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. First of all, I understand that the public sometimes doesn't feel comfortable, confident coming up, and I will say that everybody feels like that. So we give, we hopefully give everybody grace to be able to say what they're going to say, even if they're not feeling confident about it. I think I heard somebody in the public talk about the firehouses and how there wasn't a process. And there, I just wanted to let everybody know that there was actually quite a lengthy process that we went through as we talked about what types of firehouse amenities we wanted, what it looked like. There were multiple times that the actual designers came. City council actually went through a survey and actually filled out different items. So that was a really thoughtful process. And then the third one, I just kind of wanted to state on, on record because somebody had mentioned that we already knew what was going to be in the Barry Dunn Report. I personally did not know what was going to be in the Barry Dunn Report. Certainly knew what the call for, the call for proposals said, but I had no idea what the report was going to come back and look at. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't think anybody, at least on city council, did either. Thank you.
Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. I also want to thank everyone for their comments. I know it is, as I've shared before, kind of a strange process that we just sit up here because it is time for the public to talk to us. I also want to thank the folks that I've been connecting with in the fourth ward to get more feedback. I've expressed my concerns about the current budget proposal, but it is really important to me as an elected official that I'm representing my ward appropriately. So I want to make sure that folks know, all of the contact information for all council members are on Urbana City website, which is urbanaillinois.us. And if you go backslash city hyphen council, there's a list of all of the council members for the fourth ward. My city council email is jlkolisety@urbanaillinois.us. Please do keep in mind that any communication that is shared with city council is FOIA-able. So if you're not comfortable putting something in writing, my phone number for city council is 630-708-6305. If you're not sure what ward you are in, there is a map on the city's website as well. So that's urbanaillinois.us backslash residents, residents with an S, backslash ward, hyphen map, or it might be easier to Google it. Because I do think it's important that we remember this is a democracy, right? We are here to represent the people of Urbana and specifically within our wards. And certainly, I appreciate information that's being shared with us, getting the tally related to the petition that's going around. I encourage people, if you can, to either stay and listen to some of the discussion around the budget, or again, like, we recognize these meetings can go long. You can play them back once they're posted or review the minutes because that's how democracy works, right? Is that we are here to represent the people of Urbana and want to make sure that we're hearing from folks. Although it is also our responsibility to make sure that we are seeking folks out, and I certainly am going to try my best to be at the event at the IMC this weekend. So just want to again say thank you. I really appreciated hearing from folks in my ward as I've been reaching out and having that reminder as other folks have shared when coming up and speaking that it can be nerve-wracking, it can be anxiety-provoking, it can be really difficult. And if this isn't the right forum, please know that there are other ways. As you'll see, if you send in an email, please do designate that's something that you want read aloud. I know, again, that can be an area of confusion if it's like, why did that one get read and this one not? If you don't tell us you want it to be read, we're not supposed to read it. And I will say that that is certainly my standard is unless someone has specifically said, please read this into the record or please read this aloud. I think it's unfair if we're selectively reading emails that have not been asked to be read out loud. So please continue to engage in your democracy. I think it's important to recognize that that doesn't mean you have to be someone who is a citizen. Any residents can participate.
James?
Yeah, I'd like to follow along with what Jaya said. We do, in city council, listen to public input and we don't engage. I know that can be very frustrating. I've heard that the whole time that I've been on city council, I heard it the whole six years I was on county board. But I will tell you, as Jaya pointed out, we have our contact information available on the Urbana City website. My email address is jpkuisenberry@urbanaillinois.edu. And my phone number is 217-282-0255. I can assure you, people use that. I do hear from people regularly, both by email and by phone, and I have great conversations with individuals, either electronically or in person. I'm also frequently at the farmer's market on Saturday mornings, and it's not uncommon for a conversation to break out at the farmer's market. I'm always open to that. That's, goes with the territory. 15 years ago, I would have been called an introvert, but county board, city council has kind of cured me of that. So I'm always, always willing to engage and, and I can do it on, on anybody's terms, whether it's email, by phone, coffee in person, that's one I do love. And I, I got that from Charlie Smythe, who used to represent Ward One, used to have coffee meetings over on campus, like every, every second Saturday or something. So that is, that's available to anyone. It is not going to change how council works where public comment is your time to speak and we don't engage. So take one of those other options. I also want to mention, on a lighter note, Neighborhood Nights is in Ward Seven this week at Crestview Park, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. I don't have the name of the band in front of me, but I'm sure it will be a good time. So I hope people in the neighborhood and any other ward that wants to come out and enjoy community comes out and joins us.
Any other comments?
I do point a clarification. I misspoke that the event at the IMC this weekend, Town Hall for Public Safety in Urbana, is on Sunday, not Saturday. I believe there are some flyers in the back if anyone wants them.
Couple of announcements. One, on Sunday, actually unfortunately, at the same time as the event at the IMC, is the Juneteenth Celebration sponsored by the Urbana Free Library in the Urbana Park District. That's where I will be. I have, I promised I would be there, so unfortunately, I will not be able to come to the IMC event. So, but for those who want to observe, Juneteenth over the weekend, it's from 1 to 3 p.m. at, at King, actually, I'm going to have to confirm the location. I've got four different events and I'm mixing up where this one is. But anyway, it is a Sunday and I will not be able to attend the forum. One bit of good news, Speaker mentioned the Splash Program lacking funding. One, we're, we're very pleased that one of the youth grants that's being approved tonight actually funds that program. So it's incredibly important after-school program for middle school kids and we're, I'm very happy that they chose to do it. James?
The Park District website says the Juneteenth Celebration is at Crystal Lake Park.
Great, thank you. And lastly, just to clarify, the, while the fire department was included in the public safety study and the very thorough study of their staffing levels and et cetera were done, the fire station recommendation came out of a previous facility master plan assessment, which began in 2018. Report was issued in 2020. And it's a very thorough study of every public facility and owned by the City of Urbana, and a master plan was developed. So, so it, it was initiated by the recommendation and that master plan, and it's followed four years of planning and design, which included several opportunities for public engagement and repeat and periodic council feedback along the way. So it was a very, very thorough process to get us to this point. Thank you.
Any other council comment? Okay, we'll move on to the report from the Committee of the Whole, Councilmember Colacetti.
The Committee of the Whole recommends for approval the following items on the consent agenda. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero three two R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Angel Youth Center Beat the Street Teen Summit. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero three three R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Central Illinois Community Based Mentoring. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero three four R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Cunningham Children's Home Residential Treatment Program. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero three five R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Crisis Nursery Safe Children Program. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero three six R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Don Moyers Boys and Girls Club Rides. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero three seven R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Immigrant Services of Champagne, Urbana Child Mental Health Program. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero three eight R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Soli Gracia Education Program. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash, dash, zero three nine R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Steam Genius Urbana Loving You Tour. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero four zero R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, the Urbana Free Library Teen and Youth Maker Program. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero four one R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, the Well Experienced Well Family Care Program. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero four three R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center Community Studies Center. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero four four R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center Youth Development Program. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero four five R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Park District Youth Scholarship Program. And resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero four six R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana School District One Sixteen Splash After School Program.
And that's on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Go for it, Grace.
We're on an awkward draw. A second from Grace.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends for approval the following item on the regular agenda. Resolution number 2024 dash zero six dash zero four two R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Champagne Independent Media Center IMC Youth Culture Advisors.
Second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by James. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Abstain.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes.
And then I need to abstain from the following item, so I'm going to ask that someone else make a motion on that.
I can make a motion on behalf of the committee. I move resolution number 2024 zero six zero four seven R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Community Development Block Grant Agreement with Rape, Crisis Advocacy Counseling and Education Services for Survivor Services and Trauma Therapy.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Abstain.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. That's, we'll move on to reports of special committees. There are none, reports of officers, there is none tonight. We have some reappointments to boards and commissions in your packet tonight and published on the website were the names of the individuals and the commissions and boards they're being reappointed to, but I can read them here. First would be reappointments to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Sarthak Prasad, for a term ending June thirtieth, 2027. Historic Preservation Commission, David Hayes, term ending June thirtieth, 2027. Human Relations Commission, Pete Resnick, term ending June thirtieth, 2027. Three people for the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees, whose terms are up for renewal, Erica Bellina, Glenn Lane Worthy, Daniel Urban, all with terms ending June thirtieth, 2027. And Sarah Buckman for the Urbana Arts and Culture Commission, term ending June thirtieth, 2027. Is there a motion?
Can I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can we separate at least one out? I have a conflict of interest. For Pete.
Which one?
Pete Resnick.
Pardon?
Pete Resnick for the Human Relations Commission.
Look, can I say I move for all of them except for Pete in this motion?
There's a second.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Discussion? Grace.
Could you just remind us, are the terms set by the commission bylaws?
Yes, well, it depends on each board or commission may have varying terms of varying lengths, but these were three-year terms.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye. Or do we need it?
Aye.
I would, I would do roll call because it's final action. Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes. And then we'll need a motion for the Human Relations Commission.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Pete Resnick to serve on the Human Relations Commission for a term ending June thirtieth, 2027.
And it's a reappointment, just, just so we're clear. Second?
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Abstain.
Ms. Bishop. Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Last item on the agenda is a discussion item on the proposed budget, just so everyone understands watching and in the room, there will be no official action taken tonight, no votes will be taken. This is a continuing discussion from last week. So last, just to recap, last week, we ended the meeting with council members being asked to, to consider what types of changes, if any, they want to make to the budget and to bring those tonight. It would give, we can also have the ability to answer questions, but it would give Finance Department time to prepare a budget ordinance and make any necessary changes. So tonight is a discussion on your thoughts about the budget and potential changes. Grace.
Thank you. And you're saying that, you know, no final actions or votes, which absolutely makes sense in the discussion, but we had talked about straw polls to get kind of gauge interests. That's still the plan?
Right, we need to actually have a consensus to give direction to staff.
Okay, and then if I may start us out, I would like to propose an amendment to add one full-time equivalent arborist to the current budget.
James.
Yeah, I am, I am supportive of going through the straw poll kind of methodology. I do want to point out that with a straw poll with not having full attendance, that it may not actually indicate what might happen, so we do need to be cautious if it's three to three or something like that comes up.
I have a question about the arborist. Certified arborist is a particular position. Were you referring to an arbor technician? Did you have a specific, do you remember, Carol, what the?
I think whatever there is, I want to take two to three. So if it's a technician or something, whatever it's two, to add one to whatever their current positions are defined as.
So the cost I gave you last week was for an arbor tech, which I believe is filled with somebody generally who's a certified arborist. So one arbor tech position added. Okay.
Yes, add one, so go from two to three.
Any discussion about that? Mary Alice.
So I, I actually am in support of this. I, I know every time that the arborist or public works comes and talks about the trees, they have this methodology in which they rank like how good or bad a tree is. And I remember them saying, well, we can only handle up to sevens, and it goes to ten, meaning that there's a whole bunch of things that could become a problem that they don't have time to address. And so I know we've struggled a little bit with, I can't remember, it's the ash bore, I believe it was, that we finally got all those trees out. Then we got a grant to be able to plant more trees and so forth. So I do think it's important that we adequately fund our urban forest, and so for that reason, I'm in support of this.
Any other comments? Jaya.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, Urbana prides itself on being a tree city, and this is something that has been specifically identified in council goal setting as a priority, and I would be in support of adding this position as well.
I am pleased to report that the vacancies in the arbor techs have been filled, so we do have two on staff, so this would bring on a third person. If you're ready to do straw poll, thumbs up, thumbs down. Everybody thumbs up? Please put your thumbs up if you're supporting this. Okay, it looks like it's unanimous.
So that was a total of six thumbs up?
Six of seven.
Okay, yeah. For the sake of...
We're missing a thumb.
Yes, for the sake of writing the minutes, can we verbalize the total number of up and down thumbs? Cool.
Six thumbs up, zero thumbs down. Okay. Anyone else? We'll just, we'll give other people an opportunity. Anyone else have something to add, suggest? Chris.
Thank you, ma'am. So on page two of the February fifth, 2024 memorandum to council regarding Budget Amendment Number Six Omnibus, it said, quote, "As previously discussed, staff expects to issue bank qualified debt for the fire stations. An amount of $10 million in debt would be issued in 2024 to comply with federal limits on bank qualified debt." On page twenty-one of the proposed FY twenty-five, 2025 budget, it says, under category two hundred, in the revenues over $500,000 section, where it describes capital replacement and improvement fund, line item four six four double zero, quote, "proceeds of long-term debt," it lists as the FY 2025 estimated amount as $10 million. On page seven of the executive summary of the capital improvements plan for FY 2025 to 2029 dated May fourth, 2024, it says, quote, "Fire station's construction will be funded with $2.5 million from a previously awarded DCEO grants, along with $10 million in bond proceeds and $2 million of the one-time general fund transfer to CR and I in FY 25. Therefore, a $10 million bond for fire station construction has already been approved by staff and council. That a construction bond was somehow reduced down to $9 million by May fifteenth does not make restoring the construction bond back up to $10 million irresponsible. In both the financial forecast presented December eleventh, 2023, and the budget presentation of May twentieth, 2024, the City of Urbana Financial Director said it was anticipated that Urbana City Council members might have financial expenditures they, they might wish to include in the budget. Therefore, it is appropriate and expected Urbana City Council members propose expenditures." All of the fall, all of the below financial proposals in this document align with what the Urbana City Council has adopted as its priorities and goals. To address some council members' concerns that the expenditures were too specific in enumerating which organizations were to receive funding, identifying organizations have been removed from the proposal. It is asked an up or down thumb straw poll be taken on simply setting aside the emboldened funding for the already approved goals. The emboldened sections are the proposals I submit to be rolling on. Thank you for letting me speak.
Comments? Grace.
Thank you. Thanks for breaking down some of your thoughts there, Chris, about borrowing. I think that, I don't know if I have particularly strong feelings on that one. I think if we're talking about just as far as allocating money for more social funding based on our goals, I like how you have it broken down here a little more than last time, as you said, for taking out some of the specific organizations so that we can go through RFP, our grant process, and have those kind of figured out. If I was to like summarize simply, I think I agree with things like our goal one one, continue to fund community partners and projects that address root causes of violence. And Chris has proposed here $50,000 for reentry services for those coming home from prison. I think that dollar amount's totally reasonable if people have any more specifics on the thing, but I think it would make sense to have our goal and then the dollar amount. So like one one, $50,000, sounds good for me. Promoting community wellbeings, we have that other goal of continue to fund community partners and projects that promote health, wellness, drug and alcohol treatment, support families of domestic violence, and continual program monitoring and evaluation. I think this does start to get a little maybe too specific for me again, when it's like the $5,000 for 10 individuals, just because as I've seen with some of the grant allocation process, it depends a lot on kind of what's proposed. So I would feel more comfortable just keeping it a general amount of money, like say $150,000 for that goal. And I don't know if there's interest in going through some of the others, but I think that these amounts of money are relatively, you know, a drop in the bucket in our whole general fund, and there are things that we have already established and met multiple, multiple times before tonight, over years of talking about and establishing these goals. This is definitely, I think, not a last minute thing on the goals, of course, themselves. And I think it would be reasonable to put a small amount of money to establish programs to allocate that, that money and to, especially these goals, the only goal is to fund them. And if we have no money to fund, then we know we're not going to do the goal. So I think that it absolutely makes sense in that broad category to allocate money for our goals.
Mary Alice.
So some of my thoughts, I feel like, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think there's still some more work that needs to be done, specifically, I think... Specifically, I think, taking each of these areas and committing some dollars, which would then be added to the next granting function. So that's what I'd like to propose to city council, is if we come up with a pot, whatever it may be, that the priorities for grants coming in address those specific items. So rather than us saying that we're going to do, allocate $50,000 towards funding of $5,000 grants for 10 individuals, that's a very, very specific thing, I would rather that we take these areas that we think we should target for this upcoming year and call for proposals for that specific thing. So I would be more in favor of that. I'm not in favor of going down each individual one, $50,000 here, $10,000 here, do this. Now, all this said, I'd like to remind people that when we had the ARPA dollars, we had to hire somebody else to come in and do the whole process, to follow up the grants and the contracts and everything. And I don't know if we take it out of the existing structure that we have with the social service structure, if we'll have the staffing to do it. So I would rather see us talk about what are the areas that we want to be able to focus the dollars on this upcoming year? And I'd strongly advocate for us keeping it in that kind of social service funding model.
Jia?
Yeah, I think, Mary Alice, you've kind of summarized some of my same thoughts. I appreciate you raising previously too the idea of we've got a pot that's focused on youth. How do we think about maybe serving the adults in our community? I think that, Chris, what you've outlined, to me, those are all good priorities, but I would suggest to make life easier, quite frankly, and make it more realistic, the money is actually going to get out the door in a reasonable amount of time, to do something like what we do with the youth social services funding, which would be to have one streamlined process saying, these are our priorities, or maybe what would be eligible for within that pool of funding, but not making it so specific that, you know, if there's only one or two agencies that does that one particular thing, and they don't have capacity at that given moment to apply for that funding, that we're then not funding that particular service, where maybe we'd want to be funding something else. I think in terms of the total amount, I do also still want to think about being fiscally responsible. I'm fully in sport of providing additional social service funding, but I also want, you know, we've raised some concerns about some other aspects of this budget that are pushing us into a place that's not, in my mind, fiscally responsible. So making sure that if we're looking at one versus another or taking more money, that we're thinking about what is an appropriate amount that's going to benefit the services that we want to support, while also not putting us in a position that is going to be not financially sustainable for the long term, right? If the goal is, I think that's clarification too, is the goal to do this as a one-time thing? I would make a strong argument that we should be trying to plan for something that's going to be sustainable, because I think the ARPA allocation process was incredible. We had this amazing opportunity for one-time expenses to support agencies. But if we can set up a model that's more likely to be something that happens year after year and is able to support local social services, I would say that would be my priority, would be here is the process, here is something we would expect to continue going forward, and here's how much we feel like is financially responsible for the city at this time.
Elizabeth?
I just wanted to point out that two of these items I pointed out last week were potential TIF expenditures. And those are the small business grants and the downtown entertainment district, the public, $50,000 for public arts. So to the extent that you can fund those from TIF, it makes sense to keep your general fund money, which is much more flexible.
James?
Yeah, I think, you know, what I said last week still applies. I'm not comfortable in doing this this way. I think this, speaking a little bit to Jia's comment, doing these things out of borrowed money is not a great thing to do for operational. I'm sure people are going to say, but you're comfortable borrowing money for fire stations? Well, I am, because fire stations last 50 years. They're an asset that stay around. Funding operational programs out of borrowed money is a losing proposition in my mind in the long term. That being said, I do appreciate both Mary Alice's and Jia's comments on this. I will say the thing that resonates with me amongst your suggestions, Chris, are regarding the Parkland College granting areas. We had a lot of conversations about SWIFT funding a while back. But this, you know, and that didn't pan out because of capacity and for Parkland taking that on. But this is a more focused way to perhaps elevate Urbana youth to jobs in the community. I keep thinking about the pilot shortage, but I'm not as excited about that. I think you can do that at Parkland too. But those jobs don't stay in the community when people graduate from that. That's not saying we shouldn't think about supporting that, but it's just, it doesn't, you know, build the community from a standpoint of that. So if we are talking about assigning some social service money to one or a couple of these areas and building that out, I think I can find my way to supporting that. I do appreciate the fact that when Chris brought this to us, he had a way to pay for it, even though I don't agree with that way to pay for it. It's always, it's always good to come to the table with how you think you would fund it. And that includes also how you think you would fund it in year three or year five or so forth. So I'm not sure if that's helpful in an up and down straw poll thumb situation, but that's where I'm sitting with this.
Jia?
Yeah, I think that's important clarification. I also do not want to use debt for this, just to be clear. I think I would be wanting to look at something more sustainable again, that's not going to have potentially a negative impact on the city. I also think Elizabeth's point about what is TIF eligible, I think those items should be considered separately from any potential new pool of social service funding that we're considering. Not that we shouldn't do them, but that we should think about where, again, where is the money coming from, right? Is there a way that we can use money that is available for the betterment of those parts of our city that doesn't take away from the general?
So at this point, I'm hearing establish or increase the pool of funding available for social service funding in addition to the youth programming grants. The question then becomes how much and where will the funding come from? Grace?
Thing that I definitely want to get into next, but I think is the elephant in the room and the key to this year's proposed budget, because it is where the vast majority of the reoccurring funds are going, that we don't have available. What I think the reason why an arbor tech and a few hundred thousand in social services could make or break this budget, which I think is dangerously way too tight, is because of the two and a half million or so increase for police every single year. So I think almost maybe before we get into too much of a dollar amount for that, I think it makes sense, and I would like to fund these social services. But if we're going to say, well, do we have enough money and where would it come from? I think we have to talk about the elephant in the room, that all of our money for yearly commitments are going to police. And if that were reduced, then we would have money for this. And it's not a question. We don't have to borrow more or less for the fire station to fund social services. We would have the money in our general fund. We would have a healthy fund balance. We would have a healthy ratio of reoccurring revenues and expenditures. So I think, I don't know exactly where that plays in, but I think we absolutely next have to talk about the police personnel increases.
I think Elizabeth can provide some information. We do have a healthy fund balance, but Elizabeth can provide some information about how to look at the years going forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think going back, and I think this was before the current council, when those policies were approved on the 25% fund balance and the 98.5% recurring expenditures as a percent of recurring revenue. But those were actually deliberately designed to leave us in a very safe and comfortable financial position. So personally, I don't view like being close to those limits as being risky or irresponsible. On the fund balance limit in particular, the Government Finance Officers Association provides an extensive evaluation tool that we did when we recommended that 25% fund balance. And you go, it takes you through all these different categories of risk that local governments face and helps you to, based on the unique characteristics of your local government, come up with a reasonable amount to maintain and fund balance. So I feel pretty confident that being at or close to those policy numbers isn't inherently risky.
And I'm going to, there's one other. People are expressing a fear that there will be no flexibility in future years' budgets to pay for programs and sustain programs. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, so we've talked about this before. The general fund is kind of a moving target. Things are changing all the time. But specifically, within the next year, we're going to conduct a special census. And so if the results of that are what we expect them to be, that would boost our recurring revenue in the general fund by more than half a million dollars a year. But I think we'll also see other, hopefully, healthy growth in other revenues, so.
All right, Shonda, then Jia.
So there's been a lot of talk about not having funds available to implement any recommendations Barry may have around the co-responder or alternate response models. Is that the case? Do we need to set aside a set amount of money to go toward implementation of their recommendations, like within this budget? Or do we have enough?
So that's hard for me to answer, because I don't know specifically what you'd be recommending and what the cost would be.
Well, it would be Barry Dunn's recommendations to us, so granted, we don't know. And I think that that's probably the whole point also. So I guess my question is, is there, if we come, if Barry Dunn comes and whenever they come and gives us a list of recommendations, and we want to act on two or three of them, is there money in the budget if the budget is approved as it is?
There's not unlimited money in the budget? You would be at your policy limit on recurring expenditures. So to the extent that those are recurring costs, absent revenue growth such as new revenue from the special census, you know, revenue that exceeds or increases expenditures or new revenues, then no.
Jia?
So I think a couple of things. I will say I don't have interest in changing our policies right now, our fiscal policies. I think they were set for a reason. I think that we were able to weather some really difficult years, not just because of ARPA funding, but because of decisions to make sure that we were in a position to weather what might come at us. You know, we're still feeling the effects of a global pandemic. We don't know what's going to happen next. We're essentially in a lame duck year, where some of us aren't going to be here on council or as the mayor in a year from now. And so I think thinking about what is going to set up the next iteration for responsible decision-making is really important. There are a lot of things that could happen that could be good. There are a lot of things that could happen, you know, the grocery tax, right? That was not something expected. We don't know what else might be coming. And so I don't personally feel comfortable saying, okay, well, we know this has been working really well to have these fiscal policies in place, but now we want to do something different, so let's just change them. I don't personally feel comfortable with that. So I think we need to look at what is sustainable and responsible within our existing policies. That's at least my personal opinion. If we see a big increase with the special census, then great. That's a wonderful opportunity for us to consider. What else can we do? And I think that as we're having this conversation, it's important to recognize that there's nothing that says there can't be a budget amendment during the year, right? Once we have more information, once we have, you know, maybe information from the special census, maybe it's information from the rest of the Barry Dunn study. This isn't the end. But it is important that we're making decisions that aren't going to set us up to be unable to do other things that might be important for this council or important for the city after this council is no longer in office.
Grace?
I also just wanted to clarify that some of these things we're talking about are a matter of opinion. I think what we're calling a healthy fund balance and sustainable and things, when we're talking about 26% versus 25% being the limit, policies that I believe we just set a few years ago within this council term. We're looking at the same numbers, and people can make different conclusions. And I just don't appreciate being shut down with an opinion. We can have different opinions. Mine is that it's not sustainable and that we are at our limits. As Elizabeth said, we don't know the cost for alternative response, and we're at our limit for reoccurring expenses. My understanding that the only available reoccurring annual revenue was $105,000 that was just left over from one door and Barry Dunn stuff. And now if we're adding an arborist, that's pretty much gone. So we have no reoccurring revenue left to work with essentially. Special census, if that gets us an extra half a million a year, that's great. But also, as was mentioned, the grocery store, we expect to have a million-dollar decrease a year. So now we're still half a million in the hole on revenue. My opinion, this is not sustainable, not responsible. People can absolutely have their own opinions, but that doesn't make it a fact. We're working with the same facts and different conclusions here. I just wanted to point out that myself and at least another council member do have master's degrees in business administration. Doesn't mean we know anything by any means, but it also means we're not bimbos walking off the street and are also entitled to our opinion.
Elizabeth?
Just for clarification, we already have accounted for the loss of the grocery tax. And so to the extent that we're going to receive that next year, we're not counting that as a recurring revenue. We're counting it as a one-time revenue, because we know that's going away.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I thought that was the thing, and then we were expecting, since it wasn't going to take effect this year, we are counting on that revenue for this year, was my understanding. Is that right?
So in the proposed budget, we did not include the million dollars we expect to lose from grocery tax. When we bring the budget ordinance, we will be adding that back, but we will be accounting for it as a one-time expenditure. So now we know, since the legislature adopted the budget, we know that we're going to get it through, it's going to continue until January 1, 2026.
Okay, thank you. So that's in there as a one-time revenue?
Correct, not available to pay for recurring expense.
Thank you.
James?
Is that one time or is that not two time? Because it would be some money next year and then half as much the following year?
Correct, sometimes we have one-time expenditures that continue for more than one year. But if it fits within that five-year timeframe we usually use for our financial forecast, if it's going to end within that period, we'd consider it a one-time.
So it would be safe to say that it's a million and a half roughly over 18 months?
Correct.
Any other comments? Grace?
I don't know if we want to wrap up social service funding or move on to other ones. And it sounds like we were talking about similar but separate in addition to youth services, right? So this would be not necessarily youth services. I liked Mary Alice's thing of maybe focus on a council goal or two each year, you know, for that. I don't know, if I was thinking of an amount, I feel like $300,000 sounds reasonable to match the increased youth services social spending. It's maybe not all that Chris's request adds up to, but I think that would be a good amount to get us started.
Mary Alice?
So one of the things with the youth services is that we also use CDBG funds. So I think to get us started, I think an amount of $200,000, I think, would be appropriate, because we wouldn't be relying on CDBG funds for these types of things.
Jia?
Not necessarily weighing in that amount. I think that we're in a good range, somewhere between two and three. But I would just say that my preference would be if we're going to set this up to try to set it up so it's not changing every single year what the priorities are. And I don't know if that's what you were suggesting, but partially just to help our social services, right? Because applying for grant, it's never a guarantee that you're going to get that funding. But if you know that it's likely to have the same rules year after year, it makes it much more feasible to be able to hire with that or to start a new program or to, you know, increase services, where if you're like, well, I know they're doing it this year, but it's probably going to be something totally different next year, you might be focusing on things that are going to be more one-time expenses. That while those can be helpful, I think we just did that with ARPA, and that's... did that with ARPA and that's, there's always a need for more, but I, I think, you know, being able to say, for example, and I'm obviously not making any kind of commitment, yes, IMC, go ahead and hire additional interns, and you can expect that you will be able to apply for that funding again next summer. Doesn't mean that we're saying you're going to get that money, but you can apply for it again. I think it makes it easier for social services to, to kind of plan out what the next few years might look like.
Mary Alice.
I did wanna clarify, I do think that, you know, if we have a pot of money for youth and we have a pot of number for X, I'd like it to be one process. It just saves so much time and it standardizes things, and I think it gives us a more holistic picture of kind of what we're funding and how they interact with one another. What I'm hearing a lot of is mitigate community violence. That's kind of what I'm hearing from lots of different people in lots of different ways, right? And so I guess what I would say is, is that if we are going to expand the social services funding, I think that's the area that we should focus some of this on. Oh, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Elizabeth, I got a question for you. When the $10 million bond for the fire station construction was reduced to $9 million, didn't that million dollars come out of the general operating fund?
Yes.
It did. So it's not borrowed money, it's from the general, the million I'm talking about is from the general operating fund.
Correct. We, we planned to, because there was some specific concern expressed about debt, or more debt than we needed to do, because we had available money in the general fund, we decided to reduce the amount of debt by transferring that.
No, I, I understand why you did it, I'm just saying, I just wanted to clarify that it's not borrowed money, it's general operating fund money that I'm, we're talking about here.
Correct. It would be general fund money that would allow us to reduce the debt from 10 million to 9 million.
Correct.
And it's also general fund money that allowed us to reduce the debt from 12 million to 10 million.
Okay, yeah, okay. So, first of all, what the homeless have always taught me is you be grateful for any help you get, and I really wanna thank everyone for taking seriously what I wrote, the suggestions I've made, I really appreciate all the ideas. However, we wanna work through this is, is fine by me. You know, you, you see the ideas, you see, and I think some of you recognize the merits on some of it. So however you wanna proceed with the combination of ideas that we've all kind of thrown in together, I'm, I'm willing to be flexible and however we wanna go about it would be great. So I don't know where we're, what that does for a thumb, a thumbs up, thumbs down with regards to what I wrote, but I, I just wanna thank you for considering it, and however you wanna proceed, I'm, I'm open to it.
I think you probably don't need to make all these decisions as far as, you know, what, even what areas specifically you wanna fund. It's, tonight is a budget discussion, so it's how much and where is the money coming from? And then, and then you can work out the details later. Is that, what else do you need for the budget purposes?
Yeah, yeah, really, how much and where it's coming from. And if, if we're talking about for the social services funding, some, something in the range of 200 to 300,000, that's achievable within our policy limits without having to take it from anywhere, we could just add that to the budget.
Is that for reoccurring also, or just one-time?
That'd be one-time money.
Is it in the, would we have that reoccurring available in the budget?
No, because we just spent it on an arborist.
I had a question about Mary Alice's point about CDBG funding in here and how that went into reducing it from 300 to 200,000. I see what you're saying with the youth services and it's, I think, is it 270 and 30 or so? But to my understanding, we're already at maximum of social service spending from CDBG and HUD and a lot of those things, so I don't think that many more money can come from there. So to me, that would be more of a reason to go higher to like the 300,000, because there is no other money to add to the pot to make up the difference. So like 300,000 from the general fund makes it actually 300,000, versus youth services, 270 from the general fund plus 30 from CDBG makes it 300 total, to my understanding.
So I, I, I feel like, I could be wrong, Brayden would have the numbers and he would understand the percentage and the distribution, but in previous years, we've always had a certain amount from the general fund that went to the social services, plus some of the CDBG funds that would fund certain things, which gave us that overall number of 300,000. I just don't remember what the percentage breakdown was between the two.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just not understanding how that applies here because we're not gonna have that.
Won't have the CDBG funds, correct. So that's why I'm saying I think it's appropriate to fund it at the same level from general, which would be approximately 200,000. That was my point.
Okay, or we could double check, I think 270 currently.
James.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that you're talking about a comparable amount from the general fund for this allocation to what is general fund for youth services, right? CDBG doesn't play into that, other than making that a $300,000 total.
And that amount is?
I believe that it was 270,000 from the general fund and 30,000 from CDBG or close to that, and we can obviously check it off.
That's correct.
Okay.
So would that be proposing, or are we settling close to, maybe doing a straw poll on 270,000 a year?
Are you ready for thumbs?
And then also, sorry, can we clarify, this would be annually or one-time?
Are you asking for recurring or one-time?
I'm asking for recurring, I don't know about others.
James.
Yeah, I, I'm not concerned particularly if it's today annually or, or one-time, because I believe we'll have the answer for things like the special census. We know that there's approximately 1.5 million that's not been accounted for, that's in a one-time opportunity basket, that we could do this for more than a couple of years out of something that's not recurring. And so I, I'm not, I'm not particularly worried about it being recurring or one-time or not because I see the path to it being recurring, or at least supported until we have the revenue that makes it recurring.
Elizabeth.
And, and just to add on to that, I, the interest that we're earning on the ARPA funds is unrestricted, so in future years, when we're done with ARPA spending, we can take that interest, that whatever the council decides to do with that, they can do, but potentially that could be also allocated to social service programs. And that probably, I would think, over the, over the entire period is gonna be 800,000 plus.
Jaya.
Yeah, I would, I would specify that, I, I think we should specify it as recurring, anticipate it as a recurring expense, and I think we also need to clarify, because again, I think Chris put a lot of really exciting, interesting things in here, that this would just be for the items that kind of fall into the social services bucket, but then also making sure that we're not ignoring the tourist and entertainment district piece or the business piece, because again, I think if those are things that we can fund using TIF money, that's still something that's worth providing some direction to, whether that's a specific ask in the budget or just clarifying that in some way, shape, or form. I just wanted, wanted to state that, right? That we're not assuming like, oh, well, we're just ignoring that, or somehow it falls into social services, because I think it is different, but it still is something that's worth exploring and pursuing.
Okay, I'm hearing James.
Mary Alice.
So I, thank you, Jaya, for making that delineation. I think it's important for us to designate this as social service funding, I think that's really important. I actually would prefer to have it a one-time. And the reason I want it to be one-time is because hopefully next year, we will have a better sense of what exactly is going on. Right, well, we'll know that we have to budget, the grocery tax is going away, hopefully we'll have the numbers for the census and we'll know what that's gonna mean impact. So I would prefer for us to just have it as a one-time for right now. At the end of the day, it might not matter, because if we have a new mayor, they might come in and say, that's no longer one-time, or that's no longer reoccurring. So I, I don't know if it matters, but that's my preference.
James.
And I, I was just gonna add that there's not space to make it recurring where things are now, but if in the process of the conversation, there is other funds that become available that are recurring, then I, I would consider it being recurring. I just, I, we, if we say it's recurring, we are committing to finding $270,000 that is in recurring right now, that won't be there. The implication.
I'm just gonna say again, I still think it should be recurring, because if we're talking about supporting our social services, if they think it's a one-time, they're probably gonna budget really differently than if they think there's a possibility of it coming back up. That's certainly my experience with nonprofits, is you don't fund something that you think is gonna go away in a year unless you're desperate, or you think it's something you don't absolutely need, right? If it's, oh, let's be able to pay our interns, sure, maybe I'll do that with a one-time. If it's, I wanna hire a therapist, which again, probably it wouldn't be enough to cover that kind of thing, it, it's gonna be a lot harder for someone to feel like, okay, this is, this is something that I'll take. And again, that's recognizing no grant funding is ever secured for certain, but I do think, you know, we should think about what is the goal with doing this? Like I said, I think what we did with ARPA was a lot of work and I think has had a positive effect, but that's all going away, right? So what about all those agencies that we've been funding, right? This could be an opportunity for them to say, hey, you know, here's something that we started, that I wanna be able to continue, and here's an opportunity for a way for me to do that, for another year? Or maybe longer. And I, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna die on this hill, I hear, I hear the argument that other people are making, but I, I will just say from my, over a decade working in social services, that if you think money is not likely to be recurring, you plan differently than if you think that there's a good chance of it being available again in the future.
Well, it sounds like we need a thumbs up or thumbs down on recurring or one-time. Are you ready to take a position on that? All right. Thumbs up for recurring. One, two, three. Thumbs down for recurring. One, two. Thumbs up for recurring. So, we're looking at, and shall we go to the amount? Thumbs up for 270? One, two, three, four. Pardon? That's the only one I've got. We need consensus. Is there another option out there?
I, I had a question, I, I hear what Grace was saying, it's like, we need to figure out what money we have. I'd rather talk about the other parts of the budget before we come up to a conclusion on this piece, but I don't know how other people feel about that.
Grace.
Yeah, I think either way, and also keeping in mind what we've clarified, that this is not any final action and that we'll have Cal and council to vote with hopefully all members or whoever's there, so this isn't the final thing, but to give a general idea. I feel like we've already kind of gotten there, I feel like we've already, I think, hopefully given a kind of good idea. I'm fine either way, if we wanna go to the next item and come back, or say we're at 270 reoccurring tentatively, and obviously everything's gonna have to be finalized and can be changed the next few weeks also.
What questions do we need to answer?
So, so in order to consider that 270,000 recurring, we would have to know what, what are we gonna give up to, to make that a recurring expense? We need to answer that. I think at some point here, we also need to get clarity, clarity about the two programs that could be funded from TIF, whether those are a yes or no.
Is it, can we just do a straw poll on those? On if we wanna fund downtown public art and small business grants with TIF funding?
Can you point to the, I see, okay, 50,000 and 50.
So that would be strict.
Mary Alice.
41D.
Okay, so we've done small business grants with TIF funding before, and it, the way it was set up wasn't the greatest way to implement it, so I am worried about that, just because we've, we've had like, okay, if it's under 25,000, then this person, we grant this person permission to go ahead and do this, and it kind of didn't fulfill the goal.
We also have a program supporting small businesses in Urbana, it's a signage, at this point, it's a signage grant, the business incentive grant or business opening grants weren't all that successful, so, so if you wanted to add funding to the current program, that might be another option. James.
Is that something that we have to resolve for the budget, or can we have a proposal for expenditure from TIF that comes up during the year?
I mean, we, we can amend the budget during the year, certainly.
But TIF, TIF has to be planned at the beginning of the year?
No, we can amend the TIF budget.
Okay.
I have a point of clarification, but it would require an amendment, it's not like there's 14 million in the TIF, we can go ahead and use 1 million for this program, that would still come as a budget amendment, based on how we're using that fund, is that correct?
So, there's a lot of detail behind the TIF budget numbers, but yes, if it's not there and we need it, it would have to come back as a budget amendment at some point during the year.
Thank you, I understand, because my understanding is that TIF, the TIF balance is there, and are we saying in here what we're spending out? I didn't see that.
Well, so the, so the budget is primarily expenditures, it doesn't allow us to just spend fund balance, right? There still has to be an approved expenditure to be able to spend it.
Are you willing to hold off? Oh, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm gonna make two suggestions. I think we should hold off on the tourist and entertainment district and the other one, the small business loans, and I'd like to propose that we, that the new amount of money that we add to social service funding be 200,000. If we're gonna be doing reoccurring, I'd like to have it be at 200, that's my proposal.
Any comments on that?
Grace.
I think now we could do a straw poll between 200 and 270. That last one was kind of, yeah, I think, yeah, it got a little confusing because we weren't sure what the other choice was, but I think we could maybe clarify and say 200 and 270 and do a straw poll.
Okay, thumbs up on 200. Three, four, that's four, that's it then. Versus 270. You prefer 200 over 270, that was what your thumbs were for. 200,000 recurring. Versus 270 recurring.
For social service.
Correct. Okay. So we have 200,000 recurring for social service funding, and we're holding off on tourist and entertainment and small business grants to be determined later. Okay.
I would like to propose another amendment to this proposed budget for FY '25 with no expansion to police department personnel this year over last year.
Yeah, I can start the conversation. Obviously, this is at the top of everyone's mind and, and has been a conversation for some time. I had pieces of what's been proposed that I was open to, but I, I get, as I stated during council comment, I represent my ward, and I have not yet heard from anyone who is in support of any increase for the police budget, at least until the Barry Dunn study is done. That's what we said back in December, and I think that still is appropriate. We said we wanted to look at alternatives. I think that it's important for us to have a whole picture before we make a commitment to a significant expenditure, so I, I believe it would be more appropriate to hold off until the results of the Barry Dunn study are complete.
Further thoughts? James.
Yeah, based on what I've experienced over my time on council and input I have, I have had people from my ward supporting the chief's proposal. What I, what I am looking to support is I think it's important that we take those two positions that have been, that I think are justified, which are the current interim deputy chief becoming permanent, and the training sergeant becoming a position which, from my understanding, allows us to add two patrol officers, because those positions would, those are people that are because those positions would, those are people that already exist. So what would be hired would be patrol officers. I believe we need to add patrol officers to get that efficiency level of not being in a place where we're asking people to work multiple 16-hour shifts. I've heard feedback from the community about not wanting to have police who are overworked, overtired, out in the circumstances that they work in. So the place, the place, I can't support no increase, but I can, I can look at a support, an increase that targets those two positions that I think the justification of those positions has been well-made. And the opportunity for it to show us through the patrol officers that would fill those gaps to show us, you know, how close we can get to a staffing model that is not susceptible to sprains, vacations, turnover, what have you, is where I want to be as far as growth for patrol.
Mary Alice.
So I'm gonna try and not wander because I've had a lot of conversations and a lot of thoughts about this. I've kind of thrown everything into three categories. So the first, the big one that everybody's talking about is the alternative response, right? And from what I can tell from the budget, part of that has been these two non-sworn officers as part of that kind of alternative response. It's not all of it, but that was, I think, what was part of the proposal from the police department. The second thing I've been thinking about is, you know, we do have the Barry Dunn report. People do disagree and agree with some of it. One thing we have to take into consideration are we have a certain number of calls for service. Okay, regardless if they're criminal, non-criminal, doesn't matter. We have community members calling 911 for service. And we have to either decide to tell them, no, we're not sending anybody, or we have to respond to it. So I'm thinking about the numbers in the Barry Dunn report just for the calls for service. And what does that look like in terms of the feet on the ground, the people who are answering those calls for service? Barry Dunn says that we need seven patrol officers and six non-sworn officers. I, I hear everybody's concern and I have a concern about the budget. We certainly can't support adding that amount of staff today. I don't think that that's feasible. But I also think that we can ignore what's going on with the calls for service. And I wanna specifically speak to the delineation between criminal and non-criminal. Because I heard some of the public talking about this as non-dangerous. And non-criminal does not mean not dangerous, okay? So non-criminal is just this classification. I'm not sure where it came from, but it's this classification. If you start digging into what is considered non-criminal, there are certain things that need to be addressed in the moment. So what do the police do? They get a call for service, they respond because it's something in the moment that has to be addressed. And that's what we're really talking about. What do we need as we build this alternative service to stabilize and ensure that our employees are not overworked and overburdened? So, so that's the, those. And then the third piece is what the chief is asking for in terms of the structure or what he's looking for in the department. So if I just look at the, kind of the part of that structure and the patrol, just focusing on the patrol, I think it's appropriate for us to add two, which is not seven, it's two patrol officers. And I think it's appropriate for us to also honor the request of the police chief for the new structure with the deputy chief of operations and then the field training officer. So, I mean, to your point, James, you had said the backfilling. I think we have to because then we're decreasing, right? We're decreasing the boots on the ground. What I'm looking for is, do we have enough people who can answer the calls for service that we've been requested from the community?
Grace.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate the discussion here. And I hear what you're saying, Mary Alice, that non-criminal doesn't necessarily mean safe. Also, in my opinion and personal experience, police response doesn't always equal safety either and can put people in harm's way. And there's been more times when I've been afraid for the safety of the people I'm with to call the police than felt safer by doing so, depending on who you're with. And especially people with mental health are, mental health issues are way more likely, I think, to be harmed, killed, arrested by police than they are to receive services. And I've seen that in homes, in schools, lots of places. So I know each, each situation is unique and I think there's both sides of that. I also agree with avoiding such overtime from our patrol officers, but was really discouraged last week to hear that no matter how many more we hire, they're still gonna be overworked. And I would, I would like to, I would like more information on that. That it seemed like what we were hearing from questions last Tuesday is that even with these six new patrol officers, that overtime would still go up slightly. And that no matter how many officers we have, there's just gonna be more put on their plate. So they're still overworked. And I don't know what that number is so that we could reduce that overtime workload. That is what I would like to do, but I haven't got an answer on how or if that's even possible. I don't know if we can have staff input, if you would like to clarify anything or if that is the correct understanding from last week.
Last week, when you offered the question, we weren't talking about Barry Dunn's recommendation. I think we're talking about two officers. Now, if you're talking about Barry Dunn's recommendation, I can say definitively, it would reduce overtime. But if you're talking about two to three officers, it will not.
And could I clarify? I'm talking about what's in the proposed budget. The six additional officers, the community service responders, the new deputy, the new training, two and a half million dollars extra, and the overtime is still expected to increase over last year.
It will not be as it has been in the prior years. I said it may increase a little because I'm going to demand more because I have more. You're currently not doing things that need to be done because we don't have the staffing.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification. So I am hearing that even with more officers, they would do more work, so overtime would not be reduced.
No department in the world, none, has reduced overtime.
Okay, like opinion pieces and we'll get back to council discussion here. I think we saw a clear example with the fire department about how continuing the safer officers greatly reduces overtime. And I think that absolutely makes sense. This one, I'm struggling to understand how in the police department we can help them with this. I understand the fire department continuing the safer ones. That has a big impact on overtime costs that we could see with numbers and graphs. And with the police department, I have no idea what or if it would even be possible for our officers to not be overworked. It seems like no matter how many we add, they will still be overworked. And it will not significantly go down, which I find really unfortunate. I would support that, but it seems like that's not the case no matter how many we hire, is what I'm hearing.
That's not what I'm saying. That's what you're hearing, but that's not what I'm saying. I am simply saying, in order for me to expand community outreach to ensure that we aren't responding to calls that we should not be responding to, to ensure that we are adequately staffed and rested, those are the numbers that I require. Or not just I, anybody that have any knowledge in police staffing will come to the same conclusion.
Okay, thank you. I'm still not hearing anything different there.
Anyone else wanna comment that hasn't had a chance yet?
Okay, I don't know if we're ready for a straw poll. I think that, you know, the first, the first proposal that I made was no expansion to police department personnel in this proposed budget. And then we could go from there if that doesn't pass.
Is it the consensus? Do you wanna take each one of these individually?
One of what?
We had one, two, three, four council members offer perspectives. Do you wanna take each individually?
I think as long as we need to know the choices, though, of like which ones we are going to vote on.
I, what I wrote down is Grace has suggested no increases for police. Jaya had no increases for police until the Barry Dunn report is finished. James offered patrol, two patrol officer positions plus backfill for deputy chief and training. Is that correct?
Well, my understanding was that hiring the deputy chief and training would allow us to hire two patrol officers.
So a total of two.
That would be backfilling.
Okay.
That's how I understood it. Did I understand it correctly?
Correct, I think if we want to fill the second deputy chief and the training sergeant, then those need to be replaced within patrol with two new officers.
So is that for hires net or is it two hires net?
I, I think if you just wanna, and it, I'm not sure what you're trying to say, but if you want to just enable us to fill those two positions, it's two. If you want to enable us to fill those two plus two more, that's four.
Maybe this would help. It's no net gain in patrol.
Well, if we expand, if we expand the number of staff we have by two and those two positions are filled by existing staff, you're gonna hire, you're not eliminating the jobs that they were in.
Correct. It's, I'm, I'm gonna try again because I clearly didn't make the right distinction. It's two new FTEs, but no net gain in patrol. So we have, we have gains, we have, we would have a second deputy, we would have a training sergeant, but we would just be replacing staff in patrol itself.
I would presume there is a gain because those two individual, or at least one of those individuals is not doing patrol right now anyway because they're in interim role.
That's, that's true, yeah.
The sergeant may be, the sergeant may be different because that does not exist right now. There's no interim training sergeant.
Right. Now I'm getting a head shake.
So I should clarify that my intent was that by adding those two positions, there would be an increase of two patrol officers. And that sounds like I should have stated that as hiring those two positions plus adding a patrol officer.
Sir, chief, did you need to clarify?
So the interim is not an addition of a body. He is simply will be ascending to deputy chief. The training sergeant will come from an existing sergeant. But we would have to backfill that sergeant because that sergeant will have to promote for a new sergeant within, and that new sergeant will require a backfill. So in a sense, Mr. Quisenberry, the way you're framing it is just one body.
I need to clarify that that, so fill those two positions and add one patrol is what I meant to ask for. Because I thought, I think we need at least one net new patrol officer. And I'm not sure where the deputy chief ascends from, whether that position gets refilled too, and does that create another?
No, because it's currently.
It's not a net new position, that's just a title change.
That's correct.
Okay.
So if we go, if we kind of work backwards, James, your, your end goal is to have one net new patrol officer on the street.
Yeah, well, no, I think my intent was to have two net new patrol officers.
Two net new.
But I did not understand how the backfill would work. So I'm, I'm agreeing with Mary Alice at this point. I do think there is a value in taking a straw poll on Grace's suggestion. Because if there's a majority of the council that says no increase, spending a lot of time talking about what that increase looks like is gonna be a challenge.
Okay. Thumbs up for no new increase for police. Three. Thumbs up for, well?
Are we doing a down? Because I'm also not sure if someone doesn't vote. It's like in the last ones, we did no versus yes numbers. I guess, I don't know if it matters.
Can we just do a vote where thumbs up is yes and thumbs down is no, just like we're.
Let's do all those who are in favor of no increase for police, thumbs up. Oh, sorry. That's hard to do.
No increase, that's the, no increase in the budget.
Yeah, no increase in police personnel, yes, would be thumbs up. No, to no increases would be down.
No increase in police budget as proposed, thumbs up. All right, we have one, two, three thumbs up. We have three thumbs down. And the mayor, Alice, isn't even a vote, so it's a tie. So I think it's worth it to at least go through the exercise and see what the other options are.
And can I have a, you guys don't have to agree with my three buckets, but I would like to, if we're gonna talk about this, to have that patrol, have the, I'm gonna call it the social worker plus the community response workers and then the community engagement. Those are the three buckets that I was thinking we could discuss about if people are okay with that idea.
Let's get there and see.
That's what I was gonna suggest is because Jaya's proposal of the three total that you are currently, in my understanding considering, is Grace's with the time-specific caveat of Barry Dunn. So.
Yeah, can I ask for clarification as we're voting on these? Are we trying to?
They aren't voting.
Sorry. Thumbsing on these, that they're not mutually exclusive would be my recommendation, right? Because, you know, if you're just saying pick one of these, then we're probably gonna have at least three or four different, you know, well, this was my idea, so this is what I want. Where I think if we do them individually, it still shows of the options which has the most support. So I think it's important to do them as discreet and then go from there.
Okay, thumbs up or down on no increases until Barry Dunn? Are you wanting the alternative response model or the rest of the study?
I'd like to see the whole study.
Thumbs up or down on no increases until Barry Dunn's study is done? Up, three down. James's thoughts were on filling the deputy chief training sergeant position and adding patrol officers to result in two net new patrol officers. Thumbs up or down on that?
I'm sorry, may I have a clarifying question of, so just reiterate, we're talking about adding the police patrol deputy police chief that's increasing. I'm looking at page 200 of personnel, if that matters to anyone to follow along. Adding is the police, the new police sergeant is the training officer?
Training sergeant.
The training sergeant. And then clarifying that we're probably will move existing officers up from there. We will fill those vacancies and you want to add two more patrol increase. Is that correct?
Net, net gain of two patrol officers.
Okay.
That's the easiest way to think about this.
Yes, yeah, it was really confusing. I mean, we're talking about filling vacancies as new ones.
So net gain of two patrol officers, filling the deputy chief, well, making the deputy chief permanent and training sergeant. So thumbs up or down? Thumbs up or down? One, two, three. Is that a down? One, two, three. Three, three. Now, Mary Alice, would you like to clarify your?
I'm just gonna go, oh, no, it was exact, James and I came together. We were, it was the same thing.
No, but the implication was that you wanted to talk about the other two buckets.
Oh, yes, thank you.
As a separate item.
So there's the non sworn officers and the social worker. And trying to be consistent in terms of maintaining what we have and alleviating some of the burden that we have. I feel like, even though I think at the end of the day we're gonna end up with these non sworn officers and they're gonna be doing stuff, I've heard enough from enough people that we don't really know what that's gonna look like. And so I am in support of having the social worker, which we have right now. The funding has been through Rosecrans, which will end at the beginning of this fiscal year. And I think that that social worker has been helpful. There's only one. I mean, we can't do a lot with one, but at least we can do something with one. It would be a continuation of that program. So what I would like to suggest is that no to the non sworn and yes to the social worker.
And I would- Go ahead.
Can we get clarification on if we're talking about adding another social worker? No, so it's maintaining the one that we already have? I think that's-
Yeah, just so, just so folks understand, the social worker we have had the services of for the past two and a half years, the funding has been through Rosecrans. It was through a grant, so it was at no cost to the city. But that grant ends June 30th. If we want to continue to have the services of a social worker, we're going to need to fund it ourselves. And that's why it's in this budget. It doesn't necessarily mean it's through Rosecrans. That hasn't been determined yet. Our, you know, the agreement with them will end as well. So we have options as far as, you know, where that person is hired and who they, who they answer to. But if the funding has to be in the budget if we're going to have the services of a social worker after June 30th. Grace.
Is this, are we talking about still for a follow-up model with the social worker? That's been their current role and what we would-
Basically like our current crisis co-responder team is. But again, that-
Which is the follow-up model. Saying they're not on live calls, I think is important distinction.
At this point, no.
I would like to propose add one deputy sergeant, one training officer, one additional patrol officer.
Well, we're, we were done with that one. We're talking about the social worker now. Is that it? Only the social worker? Out of that bucket. All right.
So are you saying that the same response model will continue with the social worker? The follow-up model?
Not necessarily.
Okay, I don't want to see.
You don't want to see the same?
I don't want to see, I would like to see live response. So that's just my opinion on the social worker.
The, I'm sorry, folks. The, the live response is what we presented last week. CCRT follow-up plus live action is where we're trying to go to.
Mary Alice?
Chandra, I completely agree with you. I'd like to see a live response, but I don't think we can achieve a live response with one social worker. And so that's why, that's why I'm trying to, I'm trying to take into consideration the desires of the, of the public, the desires of the council, which is trying to stabilize things until we get that whole live model going, which is, I mean, I hear you. I completely hear you. It would be great if we had 24/7 and we had mental health workers and so forth being able to be out there and to serve the public. But I don't think we're there yet. That's my point.
Jaya?
Yeah, I mean, I had concerns about the creation of this model to begin with, but I don't think we're ready to develop something else. Oh, I would be comfortable with putting it as a one-time fund for another year while we get the results of the Barry Dunn study, but not making a commitment to any kind of expansion with, you know, the additional positions because this might look totally different. I 100% agree that it's something I'd like to see as a live response. But because we've seen some positive impact, I don't want to see that go away before we have anything else in place.
Are you all right with the one-time expense? So it's on the floor now for thumbs is a one-time.
Can I just clarify if it's, if it's a one? So currently we have this in as a staff position. If it's a one-time expense, nobody's gonna take that job. So if we do this as a one-time expense, then we would just move it into a services line and we'd contract for that.
Mary Alice?
So if we put it as a reoccurring expense, we will have something where we will have social workers. I don't know where it's gonna be housed. I don't know what it's gonna look like, but we'll at least have one. So I would be fine with making it a reoccurring expense because we know that that picture is going to change when we have a better understanding of what that model's gonna look like. And I hear you, you know, we have different positions at the university, which is visiting. Visiting positions are term limited, basically. It's very hard to get people to apply for those because they don't see any longevity in the position. And I guess what I'm saying is, is that I see longevity in a social worker position. It might not be exactly reporting the exact same way it is right now, but I see the city with longevity of having a social worker position.
Jaya?
Yeah, I agree with that. I guess I just have a question of is that gonna be any easier to hire for if someone's getting hired for a follow-up model that might turn into a live response model that's housed in a different department? I mean, I guess we don't know that, but considering, you know, our current model is a contract one. I mean, I, I think either way, it might be very difficult to hire for someone because I think if you hire someone in as a social worker and say, hey, you're just going in on this kind of call, and then it's like, but that might be totally different in a year. I think that might be similarly challenging to saying you're just not gonna have a job in a year.
Chandra?
So the current social worker works for Rosecrans, correct?
Correct.
And once the funding rolls out, runs out, they'd still work for Rosecrans, correct?
Do you have any more information? As I understand it, the individual who has been working with us is actually taking a job. He's moving out of town anyway, so there will be a new person if we continued a, if we renewed a contract of some sort with Rosecrans. Either way, we'll have somebody new.
The existing social worker, his name is Ruben. He works for Rosecrans and he is separating from Rosecrans, as I understand it, at the end of June. So they're not gonna have a person at the end of June. They would, they would have to bring in another staff member to fill that role.
As in, because my thought was, if we wanted to do it one more year the same way, pay Rosecrans whatever amount of money for his salary and then Rosecrans would pay him to continue it the same way for a year. But if he's gonna be gone and there's a new person, then that's moot.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going where you were going with that. And I was like, is it mute though? I'm trying to understand this. And then how that would work if we contract out with another party? Is that still in our funded personnel here? Or as Chandra was explaining, we would give Rosecrans a year's amount of salary and they would provide someone to the department? How would that third-party contracting work and be different in the budget?
So, so if, if we hire somebody, it's in a personnel line. We have salaries and benefits. If we contracted out, it belongs under services. We sign a contract with Rosecrans to continue the arrangement. We pay them whatever we agree to pay them.
Thank you.
And then they do the hiring in their budget.
Okay. Thank you. And yeah, I think that makes sense. I hear the, the logic for continuing this one time, one year to keep the program going while we figure out other things. But I am hesitant to add to things when we need to have a comprehensive look at what we're gonna do with public safety and what department it's housed in and who's involved in. So I really don't want to overcommit ourselves with those things. But I think continuing it for one-year contracted makes sense and I'm in supportive.
And I'm hearing one time. One time, one year, social worker. Thumbs up or thumbs down? One, two, three, four, five, up and one down. One time, social worker. Yes, James?
Yeah, I just want to add that I'm comfortable with that because I think Rosecrans has expertise in hiring in this area. And so I don't, I don't feel like it's a challenge. And if that person's great at it and likes working with the city of Urbana and we develop a new model, they can be a candidate for one of those jobs as that emerges.
Mary Alice?
All right, so my third bucket, my third bucket is the community engagement office. So my thoughts are on this, that I think that we've heard a lot about, both during the interview process, the town hall, meetings with the chief about his vision for having a community engagement office. And I know, Jaya, that you're not a fan of let's try something. I know you're not a fan of that. But I do think that we should allow the chief to have this community engagement office. I don't know if three is a really heavy lift, but I think one is too little. I think it's too little because if you're building something new, you need to have multiple minds at the table. And so I would like to propose that the pilot program be for two community engagement officers.
And it currently is proposed as a three-year limited term. You want it for three years?
Yeah. I guess I just asked the question of why did we miss all this money of taxpayer money on Barry Dunn? If we're just gonna randomly try things and see what sticks? I, I understand and I respect the expertise that's going into this, but we engaged in a process that was supposed to give our community members an opportunity to weigh in on what an alternate response could look like. And that's not done. So I don't feel comfortable developing a whole new program or department before we're even have the results of what options are out there. I think that's something that's really important, that community members are part of that conversation. And we've had conversations, including with Barry Dunn, about having a panel that would be involved and kind of ascertaining exactly what would be the right fit for Urbana. Like I said, I know that there's some benefits that have come out of the let's try it and see. I still don't know that that was the best model that we could have come up with. And I think now if we just move forward and say, we're just gonna try another thing and see what happens, I think that it's a disgraceful waste of taxpayer money that we spent all this money on an imperfect study that's not even done yet.
Grace?
Thank you. I definitely agree with that sentiment that we need to do the study or what's the point if we're gonna come up with our own thing anyway? I feel like I need a lot more information about this. Like what building would it be in? What resources would they offer? Would they offer? What would be the plan? How would be, what would be the community collaboration in establishing and continuing this program? And I think that those are all not conversations for the budget, as we've been told on plenty of other items, that the budget is just about the money, not about creating whole new programs. So I think that we don't have the information we need and it's not appropriate time and place, even if we did have the information, to be discussing it in the budget. I think that we can always do a budget amendment later when we come up with a cohesive plan. But I have not seen nearly enough justification or planning for something like this and what it would entail.
James?
Yeah, I can certainly understand some perspective here. One of the things that was on my mind last week was that we, instead of like investing in these different areas, now that we should be holding some money aside for what happens when we get the full Barry Dunn study back. I, we got a lot of data through the Barry Dunn study. It's clear there's people that have different interpretations of that data, feel differently about how it's presented, but it is, it is organized in a way that provides a lot of the components that we needed to look at with regard to what the work is there. One of the things we didn't have when we decided to pursue the Barry Dunn study is a police chief. And I, I'm a little uncomfortable with characterizing this as trying something and seeing if it sticks. We have someone who has an experience with community engagement in their previous role, many years of experience with that. So I don't feel like supporting this is trying something that we've kind of come up with out of the blue, where we're using our expert, who we've brought here to lead us in this, to follow a path that they think will help. So I'm going to be comfortable supporting what Mary Alice has suggested because I think it's the scope that we should be shooting for, not, not quite as big, but starting out. And I do, I do feel like it's a challenge because it limits our future with what we get from the remainder of information that comes from Barry Dunn. I'm just not confident that the individuals that come and talk to us, like tonight, are going to take that recommendation and support us doing something with it either because of how, how some, some of them have soured on Barry Dunn for various reasons. So I'm gonna thumbs up this, but I, but I, if it doesn't work out, I do think we have to think about how we would achieve alternative responder, other items that we think need to happen if we do get a recommendation that we like.
Any other thoughts? Chris?
Yeah, the community engagement model that has been proposed does not align with the 21st Century Policing Task Force report. In fact, it's the opposite. So I can't support community engagement as it's presented. It is not supported by the task force at all that way.
Can you expound on that specifically?
Page 45 or 46, I'll send it to you tonight.
I will tell you right now, there's no way the 20- May I finish?
Yes.
The 21st Century Police Force does not address community relations. It certainly does.
Not in the form that you're proposing.
You don't understand how I'm proposing it. That's the, that's the hiccup here. You don't understand it. This is strictly community relations. I sent you all an email from IACP. They are trying to feature this department because I'm here, based on what I've done elsewhere with respect to community relations. Folks, there are 18,000 police departments in the world and they want to focus on Urbana as one of the police departments next year in Boston at the IACP conference. That's not small talk, folks. So I'm gonna go on the record. I will guarantee you that 21st Century Police or the President Task Force talks about community relations. And those community relations should be in the areas where data supports where crime is. And it should also be housed where individuals can go in there and feel welcome to get services. Mr. Evans, you simply don't understand the concept.
I will send you the doc, what I read, sir.
Mr. Evans, please, don't insult me that way.
Okay, let's-
I will send you what I read.
Chris can send the information. Jaya, go ahead.
I think I need a point of clarification. When we're talking about community engagement, are we talking about off- are we talking about officers or non-sworn officers? Officers?
They're sworn.
You're talking about adding three additional police, two additional police officers on Philo? Or...
So... As the chief has proposed, it's two sworn.
So that's, that's helpful clarification. And I think that there are a few pieces here of, yes, we brought in someone with a lot of expertise, saying we have already engaged in a process, that we believe that our residents have a right to engage in a conversation about what safety in this community looks like. Doesn't mean that we don't respect the, any of our officers. I think it's disingenuous. I think that it is doing a disservice to our community to say, because we want to have a conversation, because we want our residents to be part of deciding what public safety means in this city, that we're somehow against the expertise and the officers that we have. I think what Chris was trying to articulate, from what I've seen in the 21st Century Policing Guide as well, is that that is part of what's best practice, is to involve community in making these decisions. And that doesn't mean that this isn't effective model. It doesn't mean that it's not good guidance. It doesn't mean that it's not something that we very well may land with. But I think it's also important that while we have been looking at what public safety looks like in the city in general, this process started before we hired the current chief. We did have a police chief when we made this decision. We had a different police chief, but we did have one. And I think it's also important to think about the fact that it's important to respect the environment and the city that you are coming into, when you were bringing expertise and thinking about how it fits within the context that you are in as well. And I'm sorry, Darcy, yes, I know we're timed.
Yeah, I was just going to note that the time is now 10:26 per our computers. I know my clock on the dais is off by a minute, but my watch also has 10:26, so we will need to have a vote.
Your motion to extend to 11?
A motion to extend to 11.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion, ayes have it. Any other comments on this particular topic? Grace?
We'll just echo that I think that's a really important point here, is about having the process and having the community engaged in that, both the broader community and our service partners, and those living in the area who will be most impacted by something like this. I think that that is a really important piece here, and I think that's really important, Jay's point of, it doesn't mean that this isn't, maybe is or is not what we end up landing on, or that we do or do not respect and go with all of the chief's recommendations. It's about having that process. And also on council, that we have more to consider than just looking at things through a police angle, that we have to look at a broader image of public safety and the budget and the long-term future of our community that we know intimately, and that it's, it's more than that. It's more complicated for us. And I think that there's a lot of room for all of those things to exist and get figured out. So I'm definitely in support of not doing any of the community engagement officers this round. If we want to pursue that, then have an engaging public process to figure it out. And again, we can always do a budget amendment later, when we have a cohesive proposal of what this would even look like.
I'm sorry, I, I keep chiming in. I, I, folks, I came halfway across, across the country to try to give you what you ask. And I modified this plan four separate times. And no matter how many times I modify it, I'm being asked to modify it again. What I am asking is policing 101, folks. This is done all over the world. This isn't unique. It's just not fair, because I've told each and every one of you, this is what you wanted. You wanted this. And I'm trying to provide it, and I've modified it four times. And it's, it's, I'm, I'm a bit emotional right now, because it's just disappointing. I, I expect it better.
Okay, we will...
I'm sorry, I, I think that warrants response. Yes, we asked for something different. You have done an incredible job of showing new leadership and guidance to our officers. The fact that there's already a request to feature their police department, that is admirable. But we also asked for something different that would represent our community. At least, that's what I asked for. I didn't make any promises of what that would look like. I'm happy to be a thought partner, but I work for the residents of Urbana. That's who I work for. I can't think about this outside of the context of a larger budget conversation. We're not a big city. We don't have the resources to do the incredible vision that you have. We don't have those resources. We have to think about if we have the resources to even do the fourth iteration, because right now, what we're being asked to do, we do not have a long-term plan for. And I don't think that that is a fiscally responsible thing to do, especially when, for me at least, in my ward, the only guidance I am getting is, do not do anything. Do not increase at all. There are going to be times, as public servants, that we don't agree with the things that some of our residents are saying. Night after night, we sit up here, and we hear things that can be personally offensive. We hear things that might not be factual. We hear things that we disagree with. But that is our job, is to listen to our residents and decide, how do we take that information from the wide range of individuals that we represent, and put that together in a way that is fiscally responsible, morally responsible for this city? And I understand, you made a big sacrifice to come here. We wanted you to come here, but we expect you to be a team player in deciding what is right for this city, or at least I do.
Any other comments?
That requires a response with respect to team player. I, I think I said I modified my plan four times. I understand that we're not a big city, which is why I said, let's extend this over a process of three years. I took all that into consideration. So I'm, again, you know, it's just, it's disappointing.
Yes, disappointment can go in many forms.
All right, we have a proposal for two sworn officers in a three-year pilot for a community engagement office. Thumbs up or down?
I'm sorry, I, I was gathering my thoughts, because I had my hand up before we had a, an unrecognized speaker, and I was hoping to talk, and I wasn't, I'm still that mindset, so...
We're in a discussion, and, and it's a conversation. Did you need, did you make, have another comment?
I did have something to say, but also, if you don't want to recognize me, that's fine. My point is, I wasn't paying attention to what the vote was, because I was wondering if I would be able to speak. So could you either recognize me, and if not, at least repeat the vote?
Yes, we'll take the vote after you have your comment.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to say quickly that, yes, I also feel disappointed in some of these outcomes, and that I speak for myself what I want. I don't need anyone to tell me what I want. And disappointed in the fact that I do want to relieve some of the overtime of our officers in not seeing how to do that. So I agree. I think the disappointment can go lots of directions, and I do hope that we can find some collaborative ways to move forward. But I'm also very disappointed in what I thought we were getting into in this.
Okay. Are we ready to stop? We have a proposal for a three-year pilot utilizing two sworn officers for the community engagement office. You want two? Chandra, were you going to vote? You can, yes? Okay. Two up and one, oh, three up and three down. James?
So given, given that's a tie, and we'll have further conversations about that when the ordinance is being voted on. I did want to ask for people to weigh in on the two possibilities with regard to the commitment that I hear to act on the final Barry Dunn components as they come back to us, to understand whether that gives us guidance or help in alternative response models. And so I see there being two possibilities. One is to identify funding that we would use, that we would budget to use, as that comes out and gets implemented sometime over the next fiscal year. I also think it's perfectly reasonable to look at that and say, when we have that information and we have the thing developed, that we come back with a budget amendment. Because presumably, if we don't end up spending all of the money that was requested, less the things that we've added, there's a possibility for us to do a budget amendment in the year, during the year, if we find a compelling approach to pursue. That does mean it has to have five votes as a budget amendment?
Six of eight.
Six, six of eight. So we, we, we would, we would have to hold hands and walk forward in that circumstance, because it takes a supermajority. But, but I think those are, those are two possibilities, and I don't know that the question of which path to walk can really be determined until we know what the outcome of the things that we've kind of deadlocked on tonight turns out to be.
We are scheduled for a call with Barry Dunn later this week, and we might be able to have a better idea of what their timeline is for completing the next phase with the alternative response model. It, we don't know yet when to expect that. So that is also a factor for this year as well. Grace?
Thanks. I was just wondering how we were moving forward from here. I think we established, recap, we did find agreement, it looked like, with the ArborTech, with social services funding, and then still kind of some gray areas. One thing, somewhat majority consensus on social worker. And I was wondering how we move forward for next week, moving into Cal, especially with staff here, if some of the changes that we already had a solid majority on tonight would already be in the proposed budget, or if those would be options, like laid out, and then we would make the, I mean, imagine we'll have to make the motions to amend and vote unless some have such a clear majority that they're already in the modified proposal.
So I think, I think for, for me, the ones that were clear from the polling, we'll incorporate those into the budget ordinance, right? Oh, sorry. The, the ones where it was clear from the polling, we can incorporate those into the budget ordinance that we bring you next week. The ones that weren't clear, we can just try to provide the information that you need to make those votes on the floor, and then presumably, we'll have to bring back a revised exhibit for the ordinance on the seventh, on the 24th.
And just to summarize for the public, the clearly polled items were adding one ArborTech, allocating $200,000 social service funding with tourist and small business grants to come out of TIF, and then one-year, non-recurring social worker position. Are we all, that makes consensus? All right. Okay. I don't know about you guys, but I'm tired. With no further business before the council, we'll stand adjourned.